And recorded by the good folks at W A C A T V. Is there anyone in the room that is recording this meeting? If not, we'll, we'll get started. We normally start with our vision and mission statement. We're going to dispense with that tonight. We've got a lot of agenda. But we do the pledge of allegiance and I'd like to have, I think, Jordan Kotab to lead us in the pledge, please.
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we should stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So normally, we start with citizen participation, but we're going to postpone that a little bit later on in the meeting. So that we have a lot of young folks in our audience today, so we want to start with, with a couple of presentations. So the first thing on our agenda is an Eagle Scout proclamation for Mac and Jordan Kotab. So if they would come to the, to the podium. And we do have some proclamations to, to hand out. We've got a couple of select board proclamations and we've got proclamations from the State House as well. But before we get started, could you explain your, talk about your projects, please?
So I went to the Metro West Humane Society, which is a cat shelter down by Market Basket, and I painted multiple rooms there and they built a cat box for the cats to play with and hide in.
Very good.
I wrote, researched, filmed, then produced a vaping PSA for decisions that have returned. And it's now on their website and being used by the high school health class for, I think, the sophomores.
Very good, very good. Normally, Mac, you're, you're behind the camera, not in front of it, so.
I was both.
You were both? Okay, good for you. So, so again, congratulations. So I'm going to ask my colleagues here to, I guess we've got, if Brandy and Joe would, would provide the.
Ladies first.
All right. I think these are both Senate, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Mine is for Jordan. The Board of Selectmen proclamation, Select Board proclamation. Whereas.
Amber Alert.
Amber Alert.
Whereas Jordan Kotab's work, perseverance and dedication have allowed him to fulfill his goal of completing all the requirements to rise to the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas a small percentage of Boy Scouts have successfully risen to the challenges which are faced when attempting to obtain this rank. And whereas many Scouts who have obtained this honor have gone on to distinguish themselves in their respective areas. And whereas Jordan is being inducted into this most prestigious rank of Eagle Scout at a court of honor. Now therefore, we, the Selectmen of the Town of Ashland, do hereby proclaim Sunday, January 19th, 2020, as Jordan Kotab Day and urge all residents to make known their admiration of his achievements and urge Jordan to use this honor as a catalyst to achieve the goals he has set for himself for the future. And it's signed by Steve Mitchell Chair on behalf of the Ashland Select Board. And I have for you a very prestigious Select, Board of Selectmen coin for you. And this is for you as well. So congratulations.
Thank you.
So those coins are prestigious. They, they were purchased, purchased before we changed from Board of Selectmen to Select Board. So we do affectionately call them the BS coins.
But they're also a challenge coin.
All right.
Now, do you know what a challenge coin is?
Uh, if I have it on me, when you ask me if I have it on me.
There you go.
If you don't.
What doesn't happen?
What doesn't, I.
You don't have to buy that person a soda.
Yeah, I don't have to buy that person a soda, that's what it is.
Twenty-one. Then, you don't have to buy a drink. There you go. Okay. As the old dear, she's talking about drinking with eighteen years.
Oh, okay. I'll read one.
Mansur, congratulations to both of you on, on the great work that you've done. It's, it's these types of events that we, that we honor. And I enjoy it because this is what Ashland's all about. Having the kids get involved in their community, doing things to make the town a little better. That's what it's all about. Continue those, those efforts. And to your mom and dad, you did a great job. You have two great men here.
I never said that.
Okay. Mansur, whereas you've worked in perseverance and dedication and have allowed you to fulfill your goals of completing all requirements to rise to the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas a small percentage of Boy Scouts have successfully risen to the challenges which are faced when attempting to obtain such a rank. And whereas many Scouts who have obtained this honor have gone on to distinguish themselves in their respective positions in areas that they have achieved. And whereas Mons is being inducted into the most prestigious rank of Eagle Scout at a court of honor. And now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Ashland, do hereby proclaim Saturday, January 18th, 2020, as Mons Kotab Day and urge all residents to make known their admiration for your achievements and urge you to use this honor as a catalyst to do bigger and better things in the future. And it's signed by Steve Mitchell on behalf of the Ashland Select Board. Congratulations. And here is your.
Challenge. Thank you very much.
One more.
No, just don't either.
So unfortunately Karen Spilgar, State Senator and Senate President couldn't be here, but she did send a citation for each of you. I'm just going to read one because they're the same. So for both Jordan, and I'm going to call you Mackie because that's what I call you. Whereas Jordan and Mackie Kotob of the Town of Ashland will be elevated to the rank of Eagle Scout at a court of honor to be held on Saturday, November 30th, 2019, at the Community Center in the Town of Ashland. And whereas the virtues of leaderships, patience and perseverance can be seen in many of Jordan and Mackie's accomplishments, most notably in their Eagle Scout Award. And whereas both have brought great honor to themselves, their families and Troop 232, the Boy Scouts of America, their community and the Commonwealth, now therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Senate hereby congratulates Jordan and Mackie on their elevation to the rank of Eagle Scout and further extends to them their sincere best wishes for continued success in all your future endeavors. And be it further resolved that a copy of these resolutions be transmitted forthwith by the Clerk of the Senate to Jordan and Mackie. So on behalf of our Senator Karen Spilgar, congratulations. Congratulations. Jordan, that's yours. Mackie, you probably have seen these already, right? The Senate resolutions.
Yeah.
Yeah. So thank you for bringing them for us to be able to share them. And it's interesting, as I was, just real quick, as I was listening to, you know, how it says a small percentage of, of Boy Scouts achieve Eagle Scout. I am always amazed at the number of Eagle Scouts we have here in Ashland. And that goes, I think, to the leadership of our Boy Scouts and just the involvement within our community of the Boy Scouts in Ashland. So congratulations and thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Send me a picture.
Yes, hey.
For all of us?
Yep.
Come back for a picture.
Absolutely.
Do you see the high, the other two Eagle Scouts in there?
Absolutely.
Yes.
And how about the troop leaders?
Yeah.
How about the troop leaders?
Okay, y'all are going to have to screw it in. I don't have a wide angle.
Oh, that's good. I got a second mind.
There we go. We got it.
Get up there.
Yes.
Yes, you do. Come on, Dad.
You may have to back up for the camera.
Where are my pictures at?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, I can see everyone, the rest of the group aren't here actually fulfilling a merit badge requirement, so.
So are they staying?
So they're hanging, hanging for a little while?
Maybe not till.
Eleven thirty.
No, we're, we're, yeah, we're not.
Eleven thirty to get that merit badge, I'm sorry.
That's patents. That's not a merit badge, that's patents, that's not.
All right, we are going to deviate a little bit from our agenda. We've got another group of young people here. I think we need to get them home relatively early. So our next agenda item is a presentation from the Robo Wiz team from, from Ashland High, the Lego League. So we're set for an exciting presentation.
Wow.
You will be to introduce this, will you?
Yeah, that'd be great. Wow.
So, so as this crew is getting set up, I'll let Ganesh, you know, really talk about some of what they're doing, but this team was part of what's known as the Lego Challenge. And that happens each year and you have teams from all over the country that compete based upon designing a solution around a specific theme. And this year, that theme was around making cities better, baking cities and towns better. So this group met with us as well as another Lego Challenge team and asked what we thought were some of the bigger problems that are facing us and future generations. And immediately what came to mind was sustainability. And so we had a good conversation about what that would entail and how they could actually design something that would really address that challenge. And I think they've come up with a really good idea. And they recently competed and I can let Ganesh talk a little bit more about the competition and how the team did and I think he'll be really proud of it.
Very good. So I think I made an error in terms of the grade level that these young people are on. So if you could correct me, what grade level are, are these students?
I'll do that. Yep, so we have Ashland middle schoolers here. So we have sixth grade and seventh grade.
Very good.
Hi, I'm Ganesh Ayer. This is my wife, Raji. Raji and I coach Team, Raji and I coach Team Robo Wiz at our home. The team consists of four Ashland middle school students with a passion for robotics and engineering. They spend anywhere between 10 to 24 hours after school between August and December in preparation for the first Lego League competition. That's pretty much all of their free time. This year, Team Robo Wiz competed against 400-plus public and private school teams in the 2019-2020 Eastern Massachusetts First Lego League Tournament. The first Lego League was created by Dean Kamen to encourage STEM and robotics at an early age. Each year, first announces a theme based upon which teams are challenged with core values, project and robot design and game challenges. This year's theme was City Shaper. Teams were challenged to work with their local communities to identify a problem and build innovative solutions applying sound engineering design principles to address these problems, essentially challenging them to build smart cities. Team Robo Wiz was fortunate to work with Ashland Town Administrators and Sustainability and Planning Board members to gather some ideas and project to work on. Their hard work paid off. Their core values, performance, robot design and the engineering project won second place championship award at the Eastern Massachusetts F L L Tournament.
That's great.
Their project has also been nominated for a Global Innovation Award. You can follow the team's progress on Twitter with the handle at Wiz34128. On behalf of Team Robo Wiz, we thank you for this opportunity to share their presentation. Please welcome Team Robo Wiz.
Hi, I'm Anika.
I'm Ashita.
I'm Raga.
We are Team Robo Wiz. There's a Chinese proverb, "When the winds of change blow, some people build walls while others build windmills." What do we want to build? By 2050, urban population is expected to grow to 6.7 billion people who will account for two-thirds of the world's energy consumption. This is going to exponentially increase our, increase our energy demands and carbon emissions.
International scientists recently issued a dire warning in the Biosciences Journal. Earth is facing a climate emergency. If CO2 emissions are not reduced immediately, global warming will become an existential threat. Like other growing communities, our Town of Ashland has seen a dramatic increase in population and energy demand. So how can our town achieve a net zero carbon emission goal by 2040 and sustain population growth? How can we harvest renewable sources of energy and reduce the impact on the environment?
As we research on this question, we learned that many strides have been made in the field of renewable technology. This includes electricity generation from hydroelectric, nuclear, wind, solar and tidal energy. Most of these technologies focused on harvesting geographically or seasonally available renewable resources.
Our solution focuses on harvesting wasted energy, energy that is dissipated when you do everyday activities but is never captured. For example, the energy transferred to the floor by a student walking in a school hallway, the wind generated by cars whizzing by in a highway, the weight of cars rolling over a road or speed table, and even stormwater discharge by towns. Our solution, electricity extraction using piezoelectric renewable technologies, AKA Xpert, is a special class of renewable electricity generators. Our piezoelectric pressure plate, AKA PEP, is one such energy harvester developed for a futuristic smart city. The piezoelectric effect is the ability of certain materials such as ceramic, quartz and bismuth to emit electrons at AC current when put under mechanical stress. This is the concept we harness in our prototype designs.
Our PEP prototype design consists of three main layers. Number one, the electronic components plate, ECP, which consists of all the electronic components soldered onto a handmade circuit board that we designed and etched. Number two, the piezoelectric plate, PEP, which houses a four-by-four array of piezoelectric discs. And number three, the pressure transmission plate, PTP, which houses rubber bumps centered above the piezoelectric disc array. Each of the piezoelectric discs and its rectifying circuit are connected in a larger parallel circuit and the three layers of our PEP are held together by screws, spacers and nuts.
Generating electricity using PEP is easy, simply bumping. Each time the PTP is bumped, the pulsating mechanical stress is converted into bursts of electricity which is then stored in a capacitor. A push button can be pressed to discharge the electricity and light up an LED. Please ask us all about our electronic rectification process and our circuit. We can tell you all about them. If our PEP is embedded in a school hallway, it can harvest the energy of walking students to generate half a megawatt of power in one school year. That is equivalent of 118 double A batteries. If our PEP is embedded on a speed table, it can harvest the energy of moving traffic to generate 0.14 megawatts of power while slowing down vehicular traffic. That's killing two birds with one stone.
We have even extended this concept of harvesting electricity from stormwater discharge and wind generated by speeding vehicles. Here are working models of a water wheel and a wind channel to demonstrate this concept. As you can see in the demo, when the wheel spins, the rocker arm bumps the piezo, generating electricity and lighting an LED. Imagine how much electricity you can produce if these harvests run all day and night in a smart city. During the R and D process, we learned about piezoelectric materials, circuits and PCB etching, drilling, soldering, and even power generation estimation. Our prototype PEP costs us $65 to build. If mass produced, the cost can be significantly reduced to under $20, making it a staple product in every smart city.
Our project was inspired by discussions with the Ashland Town Administrators and Sustainability and Planning Board members. Our project addressed Dr. Bay and Nancy Rander. We shared a solution with the community, with the public library, with the town hall, family and friends, and many other first Lego League teams. With the cost-effective design, our Xpert solution PEP can help Ashland achieve its net zero goal and become a smart city and save our beloved earth. Thank you for listening to our presentation. Remember, don't waste it, harvest it.
Very, you know, after an Eagle Scout presentation and now this presentation, I think we should adjourn. Go home. Is that a motion? On a, on a high note here, so, but, but thank you, thank you very much. My, my, another question, I have, t-shirts are real cool. How do I get one?
Thank you. They designed the logos, the dolls. We have some sponsors that we got from last year.
Yeah, yeah.
Last year also the team did very well. They actually won third place and this is an improvement from last year. We won second place this year. We hope to keep improving next year.
That's phenomenal.
These are very challenging competitions. There are lots of school teams that actually spend lots of time and school resources to compete in these teams. I'm very happy that the team came together and did well.
Terrific. So we have, we're going to be introducing in a little bit our new sustainability coordinators. So maybe these young folks will probably teach him a few things.
So we do plan on working with the library at some point to do a robotics day so we can come and actually show these robots that you have there actually doing the work. It's pretty cool to see them twist and turn and they have predefined activities that they have to do. And that's the challenge, a two and a half minutes game that they have to pre-program and let those robots go and do different things autonomously. They can't touch the robot. It has to go do it by itself. And so, and every time they go do it, they score points and the more points you score, the better your robot.
That's awesome, awesome. Can we do?
We could have the table there for them to come and see.
That's true. Can we do a picture?
Can I just make one more comment?
Sure.
Because you know you're my favorites. So I don't really say that. And actually, I, you know, I don't, I don't feel dumb that often, but I, each time we have a presentation from you, I always feel like I just got to hang up the cleats. That being said, you know, it's, it's so impressive. One of the things that we wanted to do is try to find a way to actually implement this in, in our designs. And so I'm pleased to say this team and another, another Lego Challenge team is actually working with our architect for the public safety building. So the hope is, is we can, you know, we might not be able to replicate this throughout an entire building, but if we could do a hallway or a couple hallways or a couple rooms with the PEP, thank you, because I never could pronounce it the, the right way. I, I think it'll be a really, really neat thing.
Well, and I would, I would like to say that as we look at the, you know, when we, whatever we do for the Mindes, we are very concerned about sustainability, that we look at it there as well in some small component because anything we can do to create electricity in a way that is renewable is amazing. I mean, you, you look at some of the other countries, just recently I saw an article about one, I forget which European country, they have a bike path that is lit because people ride on the stones and then it gets lit up. So this is a great idea. So congratulations.
Great presentation.
And thank you for presenting it to us.
So photo op.
Man, I hope, I hope they're, wow, that's incredible. Photo incredible.
You guys go a little forward. Get red eyes.
Open it, open it. There you go.
Anika, show it to.
The trophies are Legos too.
So we are actually discussing.
Good job.
How did you meet?
They just reached out.
They reached out for some ideas. They wanted something that would potentially, so they hit. Well, because, I mean, the, the charge was to work with your town, so that's perfect. Cool stuff.
All right, we'll let the room settle down a little. We do have, our next order of business is a, is a public hearing. We actually have two, two hearings to start at 7:30. One is a modification of a Class II license and the second one is a, a noticed hearing of land taking. So it is virtually 7:30, so I am going to, going to open the hearing for the Class II license by reading the public notice. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held at the Ashland Town Hall on Wednesday, January 15th, 2020 at 7:30. The hearing is a request for a modification to a Class II license operating at 62-72 Nickerson Road. The applicant is Jose Padilla, owner of New Beginnings Auto Service, Inc. Parties wishing to be heard in this matter should appear at the time and place indicated above. Interested parties who are unable to attend the hearing may submit written comments to the Select Board's Office, Town Hall, 101 Main Street, Ashland, Mass. 01721, or by Signed, Steve Mitchell on behalf of the Select Board. So the hearing is now open. Is the applicant present? If you step up to the, to the podium, please. And if you could introduce yourselves and give us a, a description of what you're looking to do.
Okay, great. My name is Hector Ibera, General Manager of New Beginnings. This is Jose Padilla, owner of New Beginnings. We're here together. I'll be speaking today just for language reason, make sure we understand and we say everything correct. We're here requesting a Class II dealer license for New Beginnings for a modification of adding more vehicles to our existing current license of 25 cars.
Okay, I think we have, all the paperwork is complete as presented in our package. We do have a layout of, of the parking plan. Everything looks to be, to be in order according to this. There are cars that are going to be stored inside one of the buildings and I understand that's been, the town has, has reviewed that and, and found that it's, it's an acceptable parking arrangement, so. So is there anyone present that is speaking either in favor or against this modification? If not, is there anything, Susan, that, any other additional information that we, we need to?
We have everything.
We have everything there? Okay. I think this is a pretty straightforward process. So I would ask that the, the board have any comments regarding this?
If you don't mind.
Not at all.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Over, over the weekend when we got our packages, I, I realized that you were looking for an extension on, on your license, on your Class II license. So I drove down to Nickerson Road and it's, Nickerson Road is turning into used car sale haven down here. There are more Class II licenses with used cars down there than I, than I would like to see, but I'm, you know, we can't deny, nor would I ever deny somebody a, a way to make a living in any way, shape or form. So in looking at the map that you provided and looking at what I saw earlier to, yeah, over the weekend and again later this afternoon, I have a couple of quick questions.
Yes.
Can you describe the services that New Beginnings Auto Service provides to the general public? What are some of the things that you do there besides as a Class II used car sales? Are there other things that you provide for services there?
Yes, we do provide detailing and we, we're, our main focus right now, we've been for the last nine years, our focus. Yes, we do provide detailing, and we, our main focus right now, we've been for the last nine years, our focus has shifted to more sales strictly, but we do provide detailing for the town of Ashland, yeah.
Now, is the detailing for vehicles that you folks are currently putting on the market for yourselves, or is it for people that can come up in their own personal car to detail, or is it for other detailing for other used car dealerships in and around the area?
Ourselves and to the public.
To the public as well?
Yes.
Okay. And is there an area where you keep that inventory of vehicles that you have for detailing in a separate area than those vehicles that are being sold? Because you're asking for an extension of your Class Two license, and sometimes vehicles that are parked there can be misconstrued as your inventory for used car sales. So, is there a separation point, do you keep those cars separate from the inventory that you have for used cars?
Yes, at the moment, we have the whole entire front lot available for parking, in the front for both cars that are coming in for detailing, in and out, and for customers.
Okay. And looking at that, that, that building, I did notice that you have, you have handicap parking in the front.
Correct.
And you have like five or six parking spaces that are in the front of the building. So you're saying, in addition to those five or six pages that are there for customer parking, is there additional parking behind those vehicles? Because I didn't see anything there, I just saw open space, I didn't see any lines marked to show that there were actually parking locations.
So, the lines have actually, were in tear, but there were lines before.
Okay.
And, no, they're not there now, but there'll be something that we can put down.
Okay, I also noticed that you have an overhang on that building, and underneath that overhang are parked motor vehicles. How many peo, how many cars do you usually have parked under that overhang and inside the building, because I know that you do some work inside the vehicle, inside that building?
How many cars at the moment?
Yes.
So with those cars, they come in and out, because we also do a lot of work, we send a lot of detailing cars to the auction.
Okay, well that's what I asked, and you didn't provide that information, so how do we know what's cars are there for your sale purposes? Because you have a detailing business there as well. Now, the problem that we have with some used car dealerships in this town is that they provide detailing as well. And your inventory sometimes gets construed with the detailing comp, with your detailing business. And how do you, how do you separate the two? Because it's important for us as, as those people that provide you the license to know what is your inventory and what is not part of your inventory as Class Two licenses. So, can you explain that to me, and actually, what is your current inventory right now that's at the location, without the detailing? Those that you, that inventory that you have for vehicles that you're gonna use for, for auto sales?
What was that last part?
For your used auto sales, what is the, what is the inventory right now that you currently have at that location?
At that location, we have twenty-five cars, which is our current license. And then, we have another location that is just for us to keep a few more cars, you know, that we're currently sending to the auction.
Okay.
Yes.
And the reason why I asked you that specific question, because I counted cars today.
Yes.
All the vehicles that I counted did not have registration plates on them, okay? So, I'm thinking that, okay, this is part of your used car inventory, I counted thirty-eight.
Okay.
Which is not the twenty-five that you currently have that is listed on your license. So, either it's part of your inventory to sell cars, or it's part of your detailing, and that's the problem that we have when we have people go down there to look to see exactly if you're in compliance, or if you're not in compliance. We, we take this very serious, so we need to make sure, and it's just not you, there are others that do the same thing, and that, and, and they've been, they've been, you know, spoken to. So that's what I need to know, how do you make the differential, how, how do you separate the two?
It's, it's actually a, a very good question, at the same time, it's very tough, because we, we send, you know, six cars can come in today, this morning, and be at the auction by six, seven o'clock.
Okay.
So they, it's, they go in and out, but it's, it's something that you, I mean, how do I?
At the moment, we're working, it's pretty difficult, you know, to answer that question, because we've only been operating in one building. And, I mean, as a business, we are always trying to keep growing, and our clients, for the good work that we provide to the public, to the town, and the auction, we always get more cars coming. So, it's a conflict right now that, you guys might get that, how many cars we have in the lot, I mean, those cars are here for cleaning or for sales, but at the moment, we're working on getting a different building just strictly for cleaning, so we can avoid that part.
Of having that many cars in the locker room, yeah.
Because for us, it's important, you know, to, for people to see like, oh, I'm coming here just to buy cars, I don't wanna, I don't wanna see cars, exactly what you're saying, that cars, what are they doing here? You know, so, we're working on renting another place to keep detailing separately for our main business, which is just sales.
Okay, so the building that's directly adjacent to you, so if you're looking at your building from Nickerson Road, and so to the right, there are some parked more vehicles, again, there, there are no plates on them, that are to the, to the right of your building, and it actually like loops around back, and you have a little fenced-in area back there, and you have, you have multiple cars back there. Are those part of your inventory, or is that something separate?
That is part of our inventory.
That is part of your inventory?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't even count those, so.
All right, so, let, let's just be clear, so inside of the fence, you, you're saying you counted thirty-eight cars outside?
Total, total around your building.
So, I, I think, were they cars without registrations or any plates?
There were no plates, the only plates that were, were directly out front, that, that would look like customer parking.
That's why we keep, the, the vehicles that are registered, they're all, always in the front. And if the dealership bring us five cars for cleaning, we, we, we bring it to the back for security purposes, you know, we don't wanna be people to just come and drive or steal something out of the location, you know? So we always put them behind the fence, you know?
Okay.
So it's possible that today you came and find more cars, because we, the auction sale is on Fridays, you know, so Wednesdays and Thursdays for us is one of our busiest days. So we cannot control, I mean, like, if we're gonna get only two cars for cleaning, or ten cars for cleaning, you know? So it's possible that you saw more vehicles today, because the auction is coming, it's Friday morning.
Okay, and I, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate, appreciate your honesty. So here's the, here's the concern that I have, you're requesting an, an increase to eighty. How can we, how can we be assured that it's just gonna be eighty and not a hundred and twenty?
Well, they, they won't fit, we have, so.
Well, you, you can make cars fit wherever you wanna make them fit, believe me, I, you know, I used to park cars in Boston, believe me, if you wanna park a car, you can, believe me, you can.
I need.
We already, we are already working with a new landlord, where we have already a contract inside for strictly cleaning. You know, so we actually can provide a location, the same in Nickerson Road, that can actually haul up to fifty more cars, where we're thinking the detailing department is gonna be moved.
So, okay.
At the moment, right now, I mean, like, we keep operating in one location, because of, you know, the, you know, that we have, I mean, like, in the whole situation that we, that we in, we wanna see what happened, you know, I mean, like. But we're definitely working on that right now.
So, so that, that actual location will be strictly just auto sales?
Auto sales.
Strictly only auto sales?
Yeah, I think we appreciate what you're, what you're describing, I think, you know, it, it's not a situation where we're, we're trying to be so strict and onerous with our, with, with what's, what we're trying to, to manage. But, and we understand that, you know, you're dealing with auctions, you're dealing with detailing, cars come and go, there's gonna be times you're gonna have more than eighty cars there, for whatever reason, right? As they flow in and out. But we're asking all of our Class Two licenses to be respectful of the permit, the license that we, we do give, so I think that's important to all of us. We have had complaints from residents, not, not regarding your business, but in other, other used cars businesses with, you know, just the appearance of it, just the spillover, and so on. So just, it's important to us.
I, no, I, I agree, I think, we've been there for just roughly, what, ten years?
Ten years.
I think we were one of the first three in that area, just, you know, very young when we started, we said twenty-five, I was like, we'll never get twenty-five cars in here, and thanks to the, you know, the hard work and dedication, that's why we're here today, and I, nine, ten years later, we see the space, we, we're here not only to ask, but also learn, to make sure we follow all the guidelines, and keep growing together and making everything look better around there as well.
And I appreciate that, and, and, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I just, again, I'm not, I'm not knocking your, your business in any way, shape, or form, I, I hope, it, it sounds like you're doing a, a bang-up job with your business, and that's great. More success to you down the road.
Thank you.
Again, you've seen it, you've seen it on Nickerson Road, I mean, you've been there for ten years. You've seen the increase of number of vehicles and, and Class Two licenses that have, that are down in that area.
Yeah.
You know, and they call it the auto, the auto mile, the golden mile, well, it's not the golden mile down there, I can assure you that, but it's not even close to it. But my, my concern is that, you know, you maintain that area and, and, and keep it in good standing with, with, with the neighbors, and the neighbors that are behind you, in front of you, adjacent to you, that's great. Do you do repairs there as well? Do you do auto repairs there as well?
No, we have, we have on Nickerson Road a few mechanics that we outsource our work.
Okay, so that's outsourced there, other than your detailing?
Yeah, correct, yeah, we don't, um.
Okay, all right, thank you, those are the only questions that I had, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments by the board? No? Okay, so, then, in that case, we can deliberate in terms of this application. Hearing no other comments, I'll entertain a motion to, actually, I'll, a motion to close the hearing first.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now, we are ready to take a vote on this application, do I hear a motion?
Sure, I move that we approve the request for the modification of the Class Two license to include eighty vehicles, and that the vehicles are parked in accordance with the parking plan, and additionally, that the applicant must keep the property clean and maintained.
And the fire and police chief don't have issues with respect to the, the distance between?
No, I sent the plan to both of them.
And they, and they, they have, they have their approval?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good. So we have a motion?
Second.
A second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that carries five zero, congratulations.
Thank you, good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck in your, in all your business affairs.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so our second, our second hearing tonight is a noticed hearing, it is not an advertised hearing. So I will, this is regarding a land takings that were approved at our special town meeting in November of, of two thousand nineteen. I will read the, the letter that was sent out to, the letter that was sent out to the property owners, and this is a notice of intent to take property by eminent domain. This was sent out on December the eleventh. References made the above cap, captioned matter, in that regard, you are hereby notified of the town of Ashland, the town, town of Ashland Board of Selectmen's intent to take by eminent domain an easement and a portion of the property located, in this case, ten to sixty Main Street. The purpose of the taking is to acquire an easement over the property to install, construct, maintain, and replace sidewalks in the easement area under General Law, Chapter Seventy-nine, subsection five C, as a record title holder to a portion of this land, you are entitled to this notice of intent thirty days prior to the issuance of the order of taking. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on this matter in the Ashland Town Hall, one oh one Main Street, Ashland, Mass. Zero one seven two one, on January the fifteenth, at seven thirty, at which time the board will vote on the taking. If you have any questions or concerns about this matter, please contact Michael Herbert, and this is signed by our town manager. So, and these land takings are, were voted on at our Select Board meeting on twelve four. This is ten to sixty Main Street, ninety-eight to one hundred Main Street, one hundred and eighteen Main Street, one twenty-eight to one thirty-two Main Street, and four to twelve Front Street. So, is there anyone here that is a property owner and chooses to speak on this? This matter? Anyone here that's, that's opposed to the land takings?
Yeah, don't feel intimidated.
All right.
If you'd like to say something, you do need to come up to the microphone and identify yourself, please.
Good evening, I'm Katie Keen, I'm the pastor of Federated Church across the street, we are delighted for however many hundreds of years to be your neighbors. There's several church members here, we just want to understand how we can be good neighbors and what you need from us, and approximately, we know it's about three hundred and seventy square feet of our property, but approximately how much, how wide that might be, and whether we might need to move our church sign, there's some electrical cables out there. We just came to say we basically understand, we think, what the town needs to accomplish, which is sidewalk, sidewalk work. We're ready to work with you, we just would appreciate anything you can help us to do to understand how much, how wide the strip is, and what we might need to do or work with you to make sure all is in good order.
Yeah, thank you for that, Michael.
It's nice to see you, thank, thank you for coming. We, this equates to a two-foot easement along the length of the property. With regards to, you know, the, if there's wiring or anything that needs to be done, we will take care of that, we will do that as we do part of the downtown project. One thing I do wanna bring up, and I believe I, I talked to one of your staff members about this, is that I had had a conversation with Mr. Ellsworth a couple of years ago about this, and my, my understanding is he's not affiliated with the church anymore, but he had expressed a concern of drainage, and making sure that we didn't exacerbate a problem of things draining into the basement of the church. And so we had, we'd actually adjusted our design to actually try to alleviate some of that problem. So, if you're still having issues with that, or if things have changed, if you wanna let me know, we could potentially work on that.
Thank you for that understanding, it is true that Mr. Ellsworth isn't actually any longer a member of the church. About two months ago, we did major restoration work of the side of the building, as you're looking to the right of it, where there was water, significant water damage. So we've put about eight thousand dollars' worth of retaining help into that to help ourselves. But it is true that that drainage area has been an issue in the past. So again, ready to work with you in any way we can, there may be other people, Dave Wensel is here, he's chair of our property, just a great guy, and other people have been in the church longer than I have been, but we appreciate, again, that sensitivity to drainage, because for whatever reason, it is an issue. You may know that there is a new daycare in town that's going into our property, a new fence is going up tomorrow, and so we're trying to make the property really safe and, and water-worthy in that sense. But again, we treasure the relationship we've had with the town, and we understand what you need to do, and it's good to know, because that was really the question, if there is electrical work, or reparation to grass, plantings, whatever, would we be responsible that, for that financially, or would the town help us with that?
We appreciate your, your position and, and your articulation, and, you know, I'm confident, I think we're all confident, that the end of this project, we'll all be proud of, of what we've accomplished downtown, the sidewalks, the, you know, just the ambiance of.
Well, and it helps us too, to keep people safe coming to and from the church, and this is sort of plug for our, for our police department. They will guard us on Sunday morning as if we were a thousand strong, and I have thanked the chief personally for that. Dave, do you have any questions that you have, because I'm not the property person, but I did wanna introduce myself.
Good, thank you. Can you come to the podium, please?
Really coming in late, I'm sure there's projects, and you've guys got it all figured out, but is there website, something I could look at, some of the plans and things like that, that's going forward, or come and see you, Michael, or?
I would encourage you to come see me, and we could, actually, we could set up a meeting with our engineer as well.
Yeah, just so I kinda got an idea what's going on over there, I just kinda joined, Henry's kinda, who's, Henry Carlson's been doing it forever, and I just kinda stepped in for him, he's, he's time for him to relax.
Enjoy, enjoy what you enjoy life. We have schematic designs, so they're not construction drawing depth, those are actually going to be completed, I think.
I'm a visual kinda guy, I can kinda.
But one, we should, we should meet with our engineer, and I think that would be a good, a good conversation, so.
Yeah.
We're anticipating having those meetings anyway before construction starts, but I think before engineering with, especially where this easement is in place, with the affected property owners would be helpful.
Make sure that if there's drainage issues, that they're being taken care of when the engineering is done.
I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Good, well, thank you for the, the church to, to come this evening, and, you know, you're such an iconic part of downtown, you know? Yeah, 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 great. Are there any other property owners here this evening? If, if none, then I would ask the board to have any, make any comments on this. If, if none, uh, then I would ask the board to have any, make any comments, uh, on this. This is pretty much, uh, prescription in terms of what we've already accomplished at town meeting, so.
The only thing I have a question on, I know that we had some issues trying to get ahold of Santander as a property owner. Were we successful in?
We had not, last time I checked. I don't think any things happened in the last couple of days.
Okay, I was just curious.
Okay.
That's, that's interesting. If you don't mind me a- adding to that, because the, the bank manager asked me, uh, on Friday, you know, what was going on with the downtown, he's, because he hasn't heard anything from anybody, and I said corporate.
Yeah.
But then when I look at the, the paperwork, it, it said, it doesn't say Santander.
It says sovereign. Sovereign slash Santander.
Oh, okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure those are the right people.
A lot of changes in the banking industry, that's true.
It's true. So I just wanted to make sure that they're getting that in.
Seeing no other, uh, uh, comments, uh, in deliberation, do I hear a motion on terms of this, uh? We need a...
Close the public hearing?
Close the hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
It's not a public hearing.
It's a, it's a public hearing. It's, it's not an advertised time.
Yeah, it's a, okay, so, all right, motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we'll take a motion.
I move that the select board take by eminent domain as approved by Article Eight at the November twentieth, twenty nineteen, special town meeting, a permanent easement for sidewalk improvements on a portion of the properties more particularly described as ten through sixty Main Street, four hundred and forty-six square feet plus or minus, ninety-eight to one hundred Main Street, two hundred and seventy square feet plus or minus, one hundred and eighteen Main Street, three hundred and seventy square feet plus or minus, one twenty-eight to one thirty-two Main Street, a hundred nine, ninety-one square feet plus or minus, and four through twelve Front Street, thirty-seven square feet plus or minus.
We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that passes five zero, and we are, in thirty days, taking, uh, those properties as listed.
Great.
Okay.
So you'll receive a notice and it'll, you know, basically document the, the discussion we had tonight, and then, um...
Thanks, and then we can notify the daycare, link constructions, please. Thanks, and please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. All right, next on our agenda, who's been patiently waiting, is our, the introduction of our new sustainability coordinator. He's, uh, if you would head to the microphone, Mr. Frank Nakashian?
Yeah, Nakashian.
Nakashian, okay, very good. So Frank, if you could obviously introduce yourself, give us a little bit about your background, your expertise, uh...
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, thanks to your introduction. My name's, I picked this scene up. Is that good? Yeah.
It doesn't have to be that quote, ten to twelve inches from the mouth.
Yeah, my name is, thanks to introduction. I'm Frank Nakashian. I'm happy to join the team, going to be the sustainability coordinator for the, for the town of Ashland. This is better.
Yeah, you're good.
I want to like, we know, but you're, that way you don't get, cool.
There you go.
Perfect. All right, this looks better.
He fits in already.
Yeah. No, but, um, yeah, I'm excited to join the team. Uh, prior to this, I worked for, uh, DCAM, which is a state agency that oversees design and construction of state buildings. I did project management and financial analysis, budgetary analysis at my role there. And yeah, I'm excited to join the team here and help out and, you know, work on, you know, zero net energy composting program, get involved with some of the new buildings, pretty much anything that, um, you know, they let me get my hands on, so, yeah.
That's great. Well, if you need any assistance, we've got some Lego League, uh...
Oh, yeah. I'm gonna need to call those guys up on the phone. They, they know, they know more than me, so, absolutely, yeah.
Very good.
Um, Frank's already been at several meetings at night of the building committee. I think he will certainly loop you into a public safety building committee, but
Yes.
He's, uh, been working on composting program, which was, uh, one of the key initiatives that we wanted to work through, but, uh... Frank, one of the things you also did at, at DCAM was you also were able to, uh, you really kind of advocated and developed the program where you develop climate resiliency factors into the grading system of DCAM. Can you elaborate a little bit on that, just because I think that's really important for people to know?
Yeah, definitely. So what I did at DCAM, a lot of it was, um, we would send grant money basically out to state agencies for building construction projects, most of the time for, um, you know, any type of, you know, existing structures. So for new roofs, new boilers, new HVAC, things like that. And so we'd be administering those grant funds, and we have a scoring matrix. You would look at age of, you know, the system, uh, weather conditions in the, you, you know, basically the nitty gritty, that type of stuff. And yeah, we added in, um, yeah, the scoring category, if it addressed, you know, resiliency of the site. So, you know, and then I'm excited to join in with Evan and, you know, you and the team on some of the MVP funds that we've got for the town, so. That'll be great to work on a master plan, you know, incorporating resiliency planning into, um, yeah, pretty much, you know, all aspects of town, so.
Very good.
Yeah, I just wanted to welcome you, and, um, I, I met, I understand you went to a meeting with the sustainability committee already, or, right?
Yeah, it was, uh, last week, yeah.
And so you're, one of your major, I mean, we've got a couple of brand-new buildings, and hopefully they can be net zero buildings, and, uh...
Yeah.
And, um, you know, we've got the, um, net zero plan, uh, and hopefully you'll be able to coordinate that and get it through. That's a very challenging task. And what do we got it scheduled for? Is it next?
The plan, you know, hopefully will be completed and presented to town meeting by next fall.
Yeah, so there you go.
Yeah, hopefully we can get on board with, uh, MAPC to help us out on some of that stuff too.
They have a lot of good tools there on there. Yeah, great.
Yeah.
And they have grant money available to help us do so.
I've been on the phone with them, so.
Very good.
Well, welcome, Frank.
Yep, any other comments for Frank?
A quick thing. I, I was able to meet Frank at the sustainability committee meeting last week, and, um, so, welcome again. Um, I know that at the meeting, there was a lot of stuff thrown at you. There's a lot of things on the table. Have you kind of identified what your, like, top two priorities will probably be?
Mm-hmm. Uh, I don't know about top two, but some of the stuff off the top of my head, um, you know, like I said, I'm definitely in talks with, um, MAPC for, you know, grant opportunities out there. It'd be a great opportunity if they can help us out with, um, a type of action plan. You know, that's what we're thinking for zero net energy, just sort of like, uh, you know, playbook, playbook of, you know, steps. We know what it is, but how can they help us out? It's definitely one, uh, like, you know, Michael was saying, the composting program, just getting something off the ground and just, uh, you know, resources for, um, you know, residents. And, you know, maybe some implementation, um, you know, green communities and other grants, so. And then also just, you know, looking into, you know, definitely the resiliency plan and some of the other options with, uh, the new buildings, you know, just getting in on some of those conversations.
Okay, well, welcome. This is, I think this is an exciting time to be joining Ashland. I think there's some really good stuff happening and a real good chance to make a huge impact to, to a lot of the new projects that we have coming online, so we are welcoming you to, to, uh, to join us, so, thank you.
Yolanda?
I also had the opportunity to meet Steve, uh, sorry, I don't know where that came from, um, at the MINDS School Building Committee. So it was nice that you were there, and I know that one of our upcoming meetings is discussing sustainability and how that can be brought into the design of the, the potential building, so. It was nice meeting you there, and thank you, and welcome aboard, and...
Thanks.
I'm sure you're gonna be very busy.
Oh, yeah. Yep, mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, definitely gonna be at that meeting on the twenty-eighth too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that should be good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Frank.
We have a meeting on the sixteenth too. Public safety building meeting.
Okay, great. What's, uh, what time?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, all right. Oh, try to, try to swing by, sure.
You're close by, right?
Yeah.
Good. All right, good. Congratulations, uh...
Thanks.
Frank, and nice to meet you. Do it, what do we have?
Someone who'd like to make a comment or, or ask a question.
Come right up.
Nice to meet ya. Yeah, oh, yeah, sorry.
Deborah Griffin. Deborah Griffin, forty-four Roberts Road. I don't know if this is appropriate, or just this made me, um, think and question, thought to ask. I have heard that the recycling is not being bought by China anymore, it's from the United States, and therefore, recycling programs are actually a waste of energy because of all the time and effort and moving the, the waste around, and then they, in the end, they just burn it or put it in a landfill anyway. So I'm just wondering if we can look into Ashland and see if we are doing the right thing, because I actually personally spend a lot of time to wash my recycling, to put it in the recycling bin. And I'd rather not waste that water and my time if it's not
Yeah.
worth it. And I've heard it's better to throw it away, which is hard for me, but I haven't started that yet, but I just want to know.
Yeah.
And that'd be great if you could look into that.
That's a gr- it's a great question, Deb, and I think it's something that, that the town needs to, you know, certainly, uh, be considering. We've all seen the recent articles about, uh, what's going on with recycling, and towns are losing money, literally, with, with their recycling programs now, so. Where for many years, we were, there was a revenue stream, so absolutely important, uh...
Okay, thank you.
Good, thanks, Deb. And thank you again, Frank.
Thanks, Frank.
Yeah.
Yeah, welcome aboard.
Excited to start, yeah.
Great.
Yeah. Just applauding everybody today.
I know. It's that kind of night.
I didn't get applauded when I got to the point.
All right. So our next agenda item is a appointment to the Conservation Commission. Is Mr. Toledo here? Very good. Come on up to the podium, and if you would introduce yourself and give us a little background, please.
Um, my name's Gabriel Toledo. I live at fifty-one Hilldale Road. Um, so I've lived in Ashland for about two years now, um, going on three. Uh, and I'm a student at Framingham State University. Um, it's my last semester that I'm going into. I'm a environmental, um, studies and sustainability, uh, student. Um, next year, I'm planning on doing a master's in GIS, kind of, you know, further my experience, a little, my studies a little bit. Um, but I thought that the Conservation Commission was a really good place for me to get a little bit of real-world experience while I'm still in school and going through these studies. Um, Carl Hackinson is one of my professors, so I've been very involved with things happening in Ashland. I've been going to most of the Conservation Commission meetings for about the past five months now. Um, so I'm pretty involved in all that stuff. Uh, I've also taken part in a program that we started at my school, uh, to clean up Warren Woods, um, that's been going through the stewardship committee. Um, and since I'm graduating, it'd be really nice to be part of the stewardship committee through the Conservation Commission, so I can keep going with that program. Um, and yeah, I'm just kind of looking to help out the environment, save, save the town and stop, uh...
We need saving.
Yeah.
Good, we appreciate that. Appreciate your interest in, in participating, and, uh, you know, certainly we need good young people to really start to step up, uh, you know? I'm not going to get into our average age up here, because I always get in trouble, so.
It's a little over these days.
Any... Uh, any questions or comments?
You said something about the fact that you were working on, uh, helping cleaning up Warren Woods. What were some of the, uh, tasks that you're doing up there to help?
So our, our primary tasks are really just cleaning up trash and killing invasive species to kind of maintain the, the cleanliness of, and of the nat- nature there, you know?
Thank you.
Keep it natural, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Any other, uh...
So we have an opening on conservation?
We have an opening on the conservation. If you recall, uh, is this Jeff Lingam's, uh, open seat? And this, this, uh, is a, uh, a term that will expire on, uh, the thirty-first of two thousand, uh...
Twenty.
Twenty, so, um...
Can I just say one other comment? So, um, just keep, you know, if you're interested in, like, sustainability, I don't know if the committee, that, that committee may also have up openings over time, so something to keep in mind.
Oh, yeah, of course.
There's a lot going on now that we have a coordinator. There's some big initiatives, so certainly, I think it's great that you want to join the CONCOM and...
Keep that in mind.
Good. Any other, uh, comments or questions? So is it Gabriel, or Gabe?
Gabe, Gabriel, either way.
Either, either way?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
No preferences.
Appreciate it. We did get a letter of support from, uh, from Megan, our conservation agent, so, and as, as Gabe pointed out, he's been going to meetings for, for quite a while, so. So at this point, I, I would entertain a motion to appoint, uh, Gabriel to the CONCOM.
I move that we appoint Gabriel Toledo to the Conservation Commission with a term that will expire on eight thirty twenty twenty.
I'll second that.
So you've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, uh, so that's a five zero vote. Congratulations, welcome aboard.
And thank you for stepping up. Good luck. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Applause, everybody. I'm not even gonna keep this going.
You're probably gonna end at this next topic, so. So I am going to take, uh, a agenda item out of order. I see that we've got, uh, a number of interested, uh, guests here related to the Eversource, uh, uh, agenda items. So let's, uh, move on to that. Uh, it's under our old new business, uh, so I will, uh, as it's listed on the agenda, a consultant for analysis, if we can get a update on what's going on with that, and then we certainly, we're all aware that CONCOM did vote to deny the project on, uh, on Monday night, so. So Michael, if you want to, or Rob, you want to give a little?
Sure. Um, well, so, uh, you recall, I think at our last meeting, we talked about, um, you know, moving forward to hire a consultant to help give the town technical support in reviewing Eversource's analysis and application on the needed pipeline, and also other kind of general advice on, uh, how to handle, um, the, the application. And, uh, Michael's been in touch, um, with, uh, well, go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, yes, we, we've got a couple of names, uh, one gentleman from Synapse, and then also Liz Stanton. You might remember Liz. She actually came and presented to us wow, almost exactly a year ago, I think, regarding this prod- uh, project. So, um, we have, Rob and I have a phone call scheduled with her for next week, um, to discuss just, you know, some of the things that we're looking for and seeing, uh, how she could potentially accommodate those and start talking about a little bit more, a few more specifics. And at that point in time, we'll probably move so far as to get a price proposal, I would expect, and then come back and bring it before the board.
Okay, so that, tentatively, our next meeting, we should be able to, uh, have some scope of work and, and a proposal, okay?
Yeah.
Um, the, uh, so currently, the other two moving parts here are the, the sighting board and then land court. Uh, I don't believe we have any significant updates on either one of those at this point. No, no. Okay, so nothing there. Uh, one of the things we did, uh, uh, we have discussed, uh, relative to the, uh, CONCOM's denial is the potential for an appeal by, uh, by Eversource, so we anticipate that. Uh, we haven't seen, at this point, the decision from CONCOM. Uh, our process would be to, uh, receive the, receive the decision and then consult with our attorney, and then also discuss with CONCOM as well, so. Uh, timeframe on that, we're, we're not, we're not sure yet. Not gonna speculate, but that would be part of the process.
I think I could elaborate a little bit just on land court. It's actually more of a reminder. Um, so initial briefs were due, um, filing for, uh, motion for summary judgment in January. Um, in February, Eversource's initial brief is due, um, with regards to summary judgment. Um, our reply brief is due in March, so that's our reply to their motion, and then they have the opportunity to issue a final reply brief as well. Um, at that point, the, you know, judge could rule in favor in terms of motion of summary judgment for e- either party, in which case, um, things would con- conclude. That would probably happen, if it goes that way, that would probably happen a couple of months after the final brief is filed. Um, the judge could also decide to have a trial for this, deny both motions for summary judgment, and then hold a trial, in which case we're probably looking at more like six months to a year for, to get us some kind of decision, so. Just land, land court, actually, any legal process can be a little confusing, so that's about as succinctly as I can put that one.
So the other thing, uh, I think to make note of is there's a meeting that's scheduled, and I, is it, I believe it's twenty eighth?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, okay, it's next, the next Tuesday regarding, uh, butters to the, uh, uh, to the pipeline. So, uh, we will be, I think most of us will probably be attending that, so, um, at that point, uh, you know, you probably have as much information that today as we will have next week, but we will be there and, and certainly be willing to answer, answer any questions. So, I kind of segue now into public participation, because if anybody has any comments they'd like to make, we can do it under citizen participation at this point, so. And I, I just want to preface, come on, kind of up to the podium, they're fine. I just want to, I just want to preface the, the, uh, the discussion by we can't, we can't be speculating. We, you know, there's a lot of things here that we just don't know what's gonna happen. We can't speculate. We can't prejudge. So we may not... We can't speculate. We can't prejudge. Uh, so we may not have answers that you're necessarily satisfied by, so. But by all means, ask.
Okay. Deborah Griffin, forty-four Roberts Road. I don't know if I have a question, just so much as a statement of my opinion.
Sure.
Um, so I wrote it down, so I can be concise.
You go for it.
Thank you all for your opposition actions for this pipeline. I learned from indigenous peoples across the country during and after their protests against the Dakota Access Pipeline, and now the Keystone XL Pipeline, that water is life. Therefore, I am so grateful for the decision by the Conservation Commission to deny access through our wetlands. I want to acknowledge that we live and work on indigenous land. I hope we can work, reach out to the Nipmuck people to get their guidance and perspective about their land. I found that, I found this in an email just a couple of days ago from Eversource, that they sent it out in December. Our fu- this is a quote from Eversource. "Our future is clean energy. Our commitment to sustainability is driven by a desire to protect our environment and support a clean energy future for New England. This includes partnering to build four thousand megawatts of offshore wind, developing clean solar power, and expanding electric vehicle charging stations across the region. Our next goal: to be the first carbon-neutral utility by 2030." So I asked, this is not a quote anymore.
Right.
Why do they need this pipeline if that is their plan?
Right.
Because it's going to take five years to build, and then in five more years after that, they're not going to be wanting to use this energy, so it seems some confusing to me.
Yeah, and speaking for, for myself, you know, this, I wouldn't want Ashland to be the last gas pipeline expansion they build, you know, and it's here in Ashland, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Hi, Brett Jackson, sixty-four Winter Street. Um, I don't have anything quite as wonderfully articulate as that, but I just basically wanted to thank the board and the town manager and the Conservation Commission for taking this, I mean, the, um, sorry, yeah, for taking this stand, um, and for your commitment to continuing to fight this. I know that it's, could be expensive, um, but I think that the five years of disruption would be really horrible, and, and I, I hope that there's some way that we can let more people know just what the impacts might be. And as a, as a concerned citizen, is there anything that I can do? I writ- I wrote to the, uh, Siting Board. Is there anything else that you would suggest, perhaps, that we as concerned citizens could do?
Well, I will comment, um, you know, I, I, this is me speaking. I'm not speaking on behalf of the board. I believe that we need to have more citizen engagement here. We need to get, uh, um, either more information out there, more education, but the fact is that when you go to the docket of the Siting Board, there's literally only ninety residents of Ashland that have sent in, uh, comments to the Siting Board. Now, you know, there's, there's probably a hundred and fifty comments there, but a lot of duplica- a lot of duplicated, uh, individuals sent multiple, multiple, uh, comments. And, uh, that being said, you know, that's just ninety people. I think we need to have, you know, a little bit more information from a much broader, from a broader, uh, demographic.
Right. Do you know how?
So I don't, you know, I, I, you know, we're, we're thinking of, of doing a survey, uh, some sort. I mean, we're, we're, we're considering that, uh, but, you know, I think it's important that we get some more, uh, you know, honestly, I, you know, from, when I read the comments on, on the Siting Board, there's a lot of conflicting positions there. A lot of, you know, conflicting agendas, in a sense. And I think it's, um, I think it would be helpful if we had more, more engagement. Uh, so that's, that's, I think, what we are going to consider doing.
Great. Thank you. Again, thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi, Rob St. Germain, sixty-four Winter Street. Um, in the hearings that I've attended and the reading that I've done, um, one of the things that I questioned was the algorithm by which they, uh, chose the preferred route. And, uh, that algorithm is badly flawed and badly out of date, and it disfavors the environment. And so it, by weighting other considerations much more important than the environment, they end up following a route which disfavors the environment. So that may be an Achilles' heel that your case may, uh, be further built upon, or maybe just anecdotal, but I think it's worth pursuing.
Sure.
Thank you.
I think kind of, Rob, that's kind of the direction, at least I'm interested in having it. So if you have any detail work you've done, feel free to send it in.
Will do. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Hello, Diane Ring, forty-two Bay Colony Drive. Um, just adding my voice to the chorus of people who, um, appreciate the board and town managers', um, continued opposition, um, to the Eversource project. Excuse me. You guys have a lot of challenges in front of you. Uh, we have a lot going on in town. Um, it was nice to read in the Metro West Daily News today that, um, that you plan to continue, uh, to support and fight the, um, defend the Conservation Commission's decision. And I, I really feel like I'm talking for a lot of people in town when I say, "Thank you for doing that, and, um, keep going as much as you can."
Well, just to clarify, I mean, we haven't officially made, uh, taken a vote on that, you know. As I said earlier, we need to, there's a process.
Ah.
The decision, we need to have a decision that's, 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 ConCom, uh, presents, we need to have a conversation with, with legal counsel and with Conservation Commission. I will tell you, I think, you know, we're fairly confident that we'll be moving in that direction, but I'm just saying, we have not taken an official vote.
Thanks for clarifying, because it is, it is out there, um, but I, I certainly hope.
That's fake news.
I hope you'll, uh, proceed in that direction. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Roberta Solman, twenty-eight Wood, Richelaine. Um, just a couple of things. One is, again, um, thank you to the Conservation Commission for their vote on Monday night. It's extremely important. Um, and I hope that when you review the decision, um, regardless of the fact that there might only be ninety people who commented, this, this is a hugely important climate change, environmental protection issue, that regardless of what you hear or don't hear from residents in town who may be busy with their own lives and not be thinking about this, um, I would ask for your leadership in that direction to, to continue to fight that battle. Um, not, i- if people want more information, they can email noashlandpipeline@gmail.com and get more information about how they can help, and more information about what's going on, um, meetings that are hap- that are happening, and, um, things that, that they can do. Um, never thinking that at the same time I would, there would be something else coming up that would be, um, shaking Eversource maybe off the front page is Niaza coming back. So there's a, if we could just announce the meeting.
Sure, we, it's on our agenda for discussion.
Okay, great. Um, and it would be helpful if, because that's just so, has the potential to be so horrifically disruptive to all of the development plans, if when we get updates about the RTD and what's going on up there and the downtown development, if we can include information about how it might be impacted by this Niaza stuff, to the extent that you have information and know anything. It'd be really helpful.
Good. Thank you. And I just want to clarify, I wasn't, I'm not trying, it certainly wasn't my intent to minimize the ninety residents that have articulated, but, you know, I personally would like to hear from a, a larger, a larger cohort, if possible.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
Okay, moving on. Good evening, Dr. Solman. I've, I've started off with this one. Ninety's a whole lot better than zero, but it's a lot less than what can be put through for the citizens to be heard. And, um, to the chairman, to Mr. Town Manager, when this first got started, how, how often did I come in the office to ask and get information from the very beginning, and how much information did I give forward?
Yeah, you were pretty diligent in coming in, so, I mean, I don't know if I could categorize it, Mark, but it was a lot.
And it went forward with the, with the Conservation October thirtieth report.
Correct.
And now they, now what came back is that Conservation, it must have been gut-wrenching decision with Eversource here to go against them, but they looked out for the town.
Yeah, I didn't get that impression, so.
That it was gut-wrenching?
That it was gut-wrenching.
I did not either, so.
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm giving the next a credit for, they, they were here and they had to say it face-to-face. And to understand the butters, what that means coming up with them, it's about time that they be heard in face-to-face meetings. And yes, later on is Niaza. Congratulations, our town is actually getting better looked at about that now, and I know that. But Eversource, have the people who oppose to keep on fighting, have, uh, local government people in front of us be for us, and take in the positive, and have the town look good, even though Eversource thinks they can, says go through with the pipeline and not say anything, they say bye and cook up the Framingham, which is a negative thing, because Framingham should help pay for that pipeline going through. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Michael?
Yeah, just, Roberta had talked about things that were pushing Eversource off the, uh, off the front page in the Metro West Daily News, and I think, I think it's going to continue to stay on the front page of the Daily News, but not just with Ashland. I think Westboro, there's starting to be, um, I talked to the town manager from there a couple of days ago. I think, you know, they're starting to get ramped up in terms of the project that's coming before them, which I think is called the Worcester Feed Line Project or something. Um, and then you also have, you know, it's electric, but the issue up at Sudbury and Hudson and that. So, you know, Eversource is finding themselves on the front, front page of the paper a lot for different projects, so it's pretty, one way, one perspective is it's pretty interesting to watch. And somewhat can be gratifying, too, but, um, I think that's pretty important, the fact that this is becoming a regional priority and not just a Ashland thing.
Good, thank you. All right, next, uh, item on our agenda is our Select Board Town Manager Priority Project Updates. First item, Rail Transit District, and we have both a YMCA update and a, uh, UGC, uh, update.
Sure. Uh, so just, oh, sorry. Um, so the YMCA, you'll see, you'll start to see them a little bit more visible. I think especially in February, they're starting to plan some of their community forums, their community outreach forums. So you'll start seeing, um, advertisements for that happening pretty soon. So they will be in each of the communities that will be serviced through the YMCA, which would be the towns of Holliston, Hopkinton, and Ashland. So, um, these are great opportunities to come in and provide feedback and talk about the programming that you would like to see at the YMCA. Those of you that, um, participated in the survey that went out throughout last year, um, thank you. And I think that's also going to be used to inform what some of the discussion is at, at part of these forums, so, um, that's moving forward. And it's, a lot of these things, sometimes they just lay dormant for a while, and you don't hear anything about them. And then, we've talked about this, Diane, that you s- get this whole flurry of activity that happens at the same time. So you will, the YMCA will be no different. Um, UGC, so if you remember, um, we had sent a draft development agreement over to UGC. Um, they had provided a response to that. Um, it, I was not at a place where I felt comfortable enough presenting it to the board. I communicated that, and, uh, I believe the attorney for UGC, um, has understood and taken our message to heart, and I think we'll be having a discussion pretty soon about something that I think is more palatable to the board.
That's, that's a perfect word to use, palatable.
Palatable, yeah.
Because we have any idea when that may?
I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks.
Is this between with us and them, or you and them?
Well, I think, right now, we're talking about people who aren't going to be there, and that's mostly from their side at this point in time.
Okay.
So approaching it from a different direction.
Okay. Okay.
So there's that.
Moving on?
Okay, update on the public safety building. Um, we do have a meeting tomorrow, uh, where we're going to discuss a couple of things, right at nine P- nine AM, not nine PM, thankfully. Um, a couple of big, uh, steps forward with regards to the public safety building happened within the last couple of months. So first is we actually achieved, uh, a wetland delineation. So the Conservation Commission, Commission actually issued an ORAD, which is, um, a resource area delineation order, um, which gives us and defines the wetland line. And then also, at the last Planning Board meeting, we successfully presented, and they passed, uh, what's known as an A and R Plan, which actually carves the gift parcel out. So we still have to go through the deed process there, but the wetland delineation is really, I think, the biggest one of, of these two, simply because you can now move forward with the designing of, of the building, because you know what footprint you're working on.
Perfect.
So that's, um, all systems go now.
Very good.
I had a question on that. Um, when I was with the Sustainability Committee last week, they had asked me whether or not, um, that we have a, sort of a green contractor on board with, um, Jen's nodding her head, yes. Because like, she, you know, Matt Marshquist had said, you know, for the school, it's very, very integrated into the process, and he was wondering if that was the same.
So our architect and our OPM both have.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's pretty much the rule of thumb today with, with new construction, and, uh, I think the, the issue becomes, uh, whether it's some level of lead certification or bumped up to literally a net-zero building. So we're looking at all of those as part of this evaluation.
Any more questions about public safety building?
No, no. Downtown.
Um, so, over the last couple of months, there were a couple really big things that have happened with downtown as well. So first of all, Eversource was able to get to BSC their undergrounding utility plan, uh, which gives us the ability to integrate that into our overall plan, which is important, because it actually allows us to put both prod- both aspects of it out to bid at the same time, which should save us time and money. Um, our timeline is still set to where we want to get the, um, project out on the streets in late February or early March. Um, bids coming in in late March and April, awarding of bids during, um, within thirty days after that, and then starting construction. Um, so that's, that's really where, it's really around with them.
Construction starting midsummer?
May or June.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, optimistically.
Yeah, very good. Good.
Um, and it really, I can't, so the ability to get Eversource to allow us to put the infrastructure of the utility projects out to bid at the same time, I can't stress enough how much easier that's going to make it for everybody in terms of traffic, just in terms of any kind of disruption, um, and cost savings as well. So you just get it all done in one fell swoop.
Before you move on, Susan, could you put the consent agenda up on the screen? Okay, next item is the Warren District and Valentine Estate Program.
Yeah, so with regards to the Warren District, I really don't have much of an update on that. I don't think Jen does either. Nope. Valentine Estate, we'll be having our next meeting tomorrow night. Um, I think we've kind of gotten our sea legs under us over the last couple of meetings. Um, we've got a pretty, I think, firm direction that we're going to go in in terms of how we're going to get information. We've outlined a process of, of what we're going to do. And really, we're going to look at other communities who have had similar projects, um, at, you know, different scales and scopes. And we're going to spend the next couple of months talking to them about some of the challenges they, they faced, and what their situations were, what kind of structure that they have in terms of maintaining the property or using the property moving forward. And hopefully, at the end of March, or within March, we'll be able to have, uh, basically a menu of things that we've learned and start incorporating that into the direction that we're going to adopt moving forward, or at least the process we're going to adopt.
Just one question. In regards to this process, have, has the committee reached out to organizations like the Holliston Historical Society?
Yeah.
And, okay.
That's actually, we're meeting with them tomorrow.
Nice.
Um, a couple of other, so the, uh, Josiah Smith Tavern in Weston.
Weston, yeah.
There were a couple of others that, oh, we're actually going to look at the, um, Clay's House in Framingham. There were a couple of others that, oh, we're actually going to look at the Clay's House in Framingham, which had involvement for the Framingham Historical Society. There are a couple of others that aren't coming to me right now, so.
I, I just think that there's, there's certainly ways to get started with the Valentine property that could then evolve to some of these greater things, but how can we start making it active sooner rather than later? Thank you.
Do you think that after this process in March, then you'll have sort of a plan to bring back, I assume you'll bring back that to us to present?
Yes, so, you know, the charge is to develop a plan and issue a recommendation for the use to the select board, which will, it'll also require town meeting approval, but their charge is to deliver it to the select board. And I don't expect that, I think that is going to take a while. I think there's, I don't think there's any other way around it.
Yeah.
Good, okay, any other questions regarding our, our project updates? If none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda?
A move, a move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just one comment I want to make, I was really impressed with, with most, with all the resumes that we received for, for the firefighters, so great addition, yeah, very exciting.
Hope they stay.
Yeah, we'd like to, we'd like to meet them at some point.
So, we're going to bring them in at the February fifth meeting.
Okay, super, yeah.
And why are we hiring so many at, at once?
So, if you recall, we were awarded a safer grant late last year of seven hundred and fifty thousand. Safer grant to put on for firefighters. And so, the safer grant allows us, that grant pays for three quarters or seventy-five percent of each of these firefighters' related costs. So, their salary, their benefits, equipment, things of that nature. The second year is at seventy-five percent as well, the third year it drops down to thirty-five percent. So, one of the things that we've, we talked about before accepting this is, you know, how can we make sure that we can sustain this going forward? So, we feel comfortable with that.
Question in regards to that, what does this bring our account to for each of the shifts?
It's, it's great, we're actually up to, this would be six.
Wow. And our goal is?
I think
Long term?
Eight or six? Seven or eight, but I think, you know, we've increased fire department staffing by fifty percent, fifty, five oh percent.
Is that our goal, or is that the, the kind of the industry recommendation? Because I, you know, you can get a little, little fuzzy with the shift.
I, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
Because I remember you recall the conversations with
Oh, yeah.
With Hopkinton, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Very well, do I remember those conversations.
Yeah, I mean, fifty percent in the last three or four years.
That's impressive, yeah.
So, um.
Well, and, but because of it, we've been able to add the second ambulance to each shift. And, I mean, it's, they've been much more active and able to be proactive as well, having these extra bodies there, so.
And the things that you don't see but are really, really, really important are things like response times and the ability to do that. I mean, you're not going to see that quantified all the time, but
It also helps with sick time, too. You know, not only the fill, you know, overtime.
Well, not having to backfill as many, and stuff like that, yeah.
Right.
And those that maybe in their, in their careers where they're looking to retire soon. Now, I don't know if it's a three year, four year window, I don't know if we have anybody that's near retirement age yet.
Got a couple.
There's a few, but those four that are coming in, you know.
Yeah, we're starting them in.
It's not in there.
We've got a, we've got a great crew of veterans and then people who've been there for a little while and are assimilated into the culture. And even, you know, some of our younger ones have now been in the department for a while.
That's great, well, congratulations to our new firefighter, firefighters.
Yeah, forward to meet them.
Absolutely. All right, our next agenda item, we, we are pulling under old, old new business, letter A, Community Choice Power Supply Program. Our rep is coming in on the fifth, so that we can really get into a, a good discussion and description. We've done letter B. Our next item C, we are actually going to pull, which is a Discuss Thirty-One Pleasant Street, which was a request for a waiver of a demo delay. And we're pulling it essentially because we don't have an application in front of us. What we received was a, a letter of, a letter, we don't have actually an application. And so, we really don't know what, what the status is of, of this property, other than the fact that we received in our backup an order of conditions by the, by the Board of Health to repair a certain list of items that were deficient in this, in this property. We did not receive a, a, you know, a, a letter that condemned the building from either the Building Commissioner or the Board of Health. So, it's, it was unclear as to why there was a demolition request being made. And the fact is, we don't have an application in front of us. The reason why we are adjudicating this is because we don't have a historical commission at this point. There's only three members, so the commission can't meet. So, we become the de facto historical commission. And there's a very prescribed, our bylaws have a prescribed process for working through a demolition request. And so, at this point, there's nothing in front of us, so we're pulling it, little background. I did reach out, I see Mr. Wilson in the, in the room. I did reach out to Cliff, and he gave, gave us some great information about this, about this property and preparation. But at this point, there's nothing, nothing in front of us.
Isn't the honest on the owner of that property to take the bull by the horns and repair the, the necessary things that need to be done that were listed by the, by the board?
Absolutely.
So, why, why isn't he in front of us to make sure that these things are being done?
Well, he, that's, that's a Board of Health regulation, he's, he's, so he's in front of the Board of Health.
So, who requested the demolition?
A gentleman who is affiliated with the property.
Okay.
Not the owner. And that's an important point.
So, that's what I'm saying, there's a, there's a lot of unknowns here that, you know, we really, at this point, need to, need to get, dig into it because there's nothing in front of us.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Can I just add, on that note, because we don't have a historical commission, if you are watching and you are interested in historical preservation or just in the historical buildings of Ashland, we are looking for people to put in a volunteer form, a talent bank form, to be part of that historical commission. It's, you know, as we know, we have a lot of historical buildings here in Ashland, and we hear a lot of people wanting to save them, which I think is, you know, is important. But we need people then who are willing to be on that commission and review this and bring forward things that are going on so that the public can be aware, and it's not a last minute, you know, on our agenda, that people are seeing things happening. So, if you are at all interested, fill out a talent bank form, and let's see if we can get ourselves a historical commission.
Okay, moving on.
Recruit somebody.
What?
I'm sorry, I was talking to Cliff, I told him to go recruit somebody.
He's, oh, he just raised his hand.
Yeah.
He's volunteering, yeah.
Moving on, our next agenda item, letter D, vote to approve board renewal for downtown engineering.
Bond.
Bond renewal.
What did I say, board?
Board.
Bond, bond renewal for downtown engineering.
Yeah, this is a, actually a short term note. It's a, it's a, it's what, it's what's known as a ban, it's a bond anticipation note. So, we rolled it over again this year. The good news is, is that we actually got a better interest rate this year than we did last year. And so, we need to thank Cindy Sancata for that. Last year's rate was two point five five, this year we got a rate of one point seven five. But when you start looking at the premium costs, you know, there's a, you subtract out the premium costs, it's actually a net interest cost of one point five four, so.
Wow, nice.
She did a good job with that, so. This is a, it's a simple, a simple vote, you know, not, you don't have to sign thirty pieces of paper like you do. You do the big bond renewals.
Okay. All right, so a motion to approve?
I move that we approve and sign the eight hundred thousand dollar bond anticipation notice for the downtown phase two plonning, planning project, and thank Cindy for her work in getting such a great interest rate.
Second that.
The motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that carries five zero, so, thank you, Cindy and town manager. Next agenda item, letter E, discuss and select the date for the volunteer breakfast. This has been our annual breakfast that, over the last several years, has really, really kind of blossomed into a nice event. A nice, you know, we've, I think Susan's done a really good job of sending out to all the groups and making sure we get good representation, so. So, dates, historically, Susan, we, we're sometime in February?
I think last year we did it in March.
In March, okay.
But completely up to you, I'm not sure why you shifted last year.
Weather maybe?
I think we looked at, like, school vacation week and stuff like that, and
So, I think it was the first Saturday in March.
So, that would be March the seventh, okay?
Okay.
Very good. And so, March seventh at the community center, and usually we, we do this at nine o'clock, is that what it is?
Whatever time you pick, I will put on the invitation.
What have we done in the past?
I would have to look it up, I think it's probably nine o'clock.
I think it's nine to like eleven.
If it's eight or something, I'll send something out.
That's too early on a Saturday, nine o'clock.
It's too nine to eleven.
Nine to eleven on March the seventh, and you will take care of the, the catering arrangements?
I will.
Okay.
And I'll get it right this morning.
No decaf coffee.
Why, what happened last year?
We need to have decaf coffee.
Oh, my God.
Or no, it was only decaf, it was only decaf last year.
Boy, John did a stellar job there.
It was not an issue, but for everyone else, it was not pretty.
All right, very good, so we've got a, we've got a, a date for March the seventh, so. And we'll look forward to a nice, a nice crowd again. All right, next item on the agenda, letter F, is Discuss Town Manager Evaluation Timeline. Oh, it's that time again.
Yep. I thought we were pulling it.
That was just like, if you, if you want to skip it, I mean, that's, that's, I could
Gotta be done.
So, you've got it, you can run through this, I think you've got it prescribed pretty well, so.
Yes, so, and I believe you were forwarded this information. So, just the proposed timeline is, I'll go ahead and complete the self evaluation and get that to you by the, the week of the third. At that point in time, you have, you'll have the opportunity to fill your individual sheets out, and we can meet and talk about it, go over some things, and if after that conversation you want to adjust something, you have the opportunity to do that the week of February seventeenth. And the, excuse me, extending into the twenty-fourth, and then
Wait, what's the timing? I don't remember getting something with the timing.
It's all timing right in here, it's got all the week of two, three, the week of two seventeen.
Do you not have the sheet, Yolanda?
Was it?
I don't see it.
Yeah, it's in there.
I think it was in, it was in the email.
It was in there.
I can forward, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll harass everybody anyway, so.
Yeah.
Make sure that we You want this?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
So, at that point in time, the chair takes the individual sheets and collates them and puts them together, drafts a statement to be released at the BOS meeting. The chair, at that point in time, will send a statement to review, or for review by the board and the town manager. And the feedback must, if you have any feedback, must be received by three sixteen, March sixteenth. And so, the evaluation and statement is then discussed at the March eighteenth meeting.
Okay.
It's fairly, fairly straightforward now.
This will be your first evaluation process, and, yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's actually, it's a very important part of what we do. See, really, the only two hires that we, the board does is the town manager and the town council. We also do this for town council as well, a little bit later on in the year, so.
That'll be starting actually in March.
Yeah. So, I will no doubt be harassing everybody in terms of getting this in appropriately, so. I don't have to worry about you. All right, are we good with, with the process and the dates?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. All right. Next item on the agenda is Discuss Ashland Cocker Super Bowl Rings. We did get a request from Coach McKay for some assistance with providing the football team with, with rings. Sure, everybody is aware of their success this year and the excitement that they brought to the community. You know, Brandy, you were at the game.
I was at the game, yeah. Screaming slash cheering.
And I think a lot of people did watch the game as well, but
It was basically one where I was sitting, I don't know where.
Yeah. I just, my, my comment about this, I'm fully, totally supportive of this. You know, I think, obviously, the, the, I didn't realize rings cost what they do, and it's a lot different.
The number of that they have to get.
It's, yeah, very, I understand, a lot more expensive than, you know, when we, when you and I had high school rings.
I never got, I didn't get the Super Bowl rings, sorry.
But that being said, I, I think, you know, what, what parents and, and students pay today for all of the extras beyond, beyond, you know, the, just going to school, it's, it is expensive. And so, I would like to propose, this is my suggestion, that we bump this twenty-five hundred dollars up to five thousand dollars. I think we have the, the funds in the bank to accommodate it. I think it's a, a, you know, a deserving
Could I make a, could I make a suggestion? So, I fully support and congratulate the team for, for all the work that they did. I think our student athletes show, you know, perseverance and teamwork, and it's amazing what they all do. I was at the high school gym over the weekend watching my son's basketball game, and I was struck by the banners that are all hanging. And, you know, our teams have had, not just football, but other successes over the years. And what I struggle with is equity and just making sure that we support all student athletes. The, the Cocker Club, which is the fundraising arm that does, not only is fundraising for the rings, but also supports all student athletes. So, if a student can't afford to pay for the fee to register to play a sport, the Cocker Club comes through. Or if there's any gaps, the Cocker Club is there to, to help bridge that gap.
Yeah.
So, you know, in thinking about this, you know, my personal perspective is, is making sure that we support all of athletics. So, I would like to make a suggestion that instead of earmarking this specifically for the class rings, that we make a donation to the Cocker Club and on behalf of, you know, the select board, but also in memory of PJ Ferrier and Jake Silver and the Cocker Football Team, and have the Cuckers, the Cocker Club really decide how that money is allocated. Because I feel like placing football above all other athletics may or may not be equitable. So, while I support doing something, because I want to do something because I think it was an extraordinary year, I also want to make sure that the kids have what they need for what they need. So, I like the idea of bumping up the money, I think that's a good idea. I would just say that, you know, if, if we give the money to the Cocker Club and they decide that they want to allocate all of it to the rings or a portion of it to the rings, then it's their decision to make and we're not.
And you're talking about the five thousand, that Steve, or twenty-five hundred, what do you, either one or?
I'm either, either one is fine, I'm fine, I'm comfortable with five thousand.
I just had a question.
Yeah.
I'm trying to, have we given funds to the Cocker Club directly in the past?
We have in the past, we've, we've given funds to, you know, to go to Brandy's point, which I think is, is, is well founded. I mean, I think we do support a, a lot of, not just athletics, but, you know, our grant program certainly supports youth sports in general. We, we support all of, all the requests that come our way. But we also support, you know, things like the Lego League and the Robotics Club and so on. So, you know, for me, you know, I understand what you're saying, but this is a specific request. This is not from the Cocker, Cocker Club per se, and I, I get that. You know, this, this is, you know, I, for me, I, I think I, I'm inclined to support what's in front of us, rather than try to make it something else. I mean, we can, we can go back and do something for the Cocker Club at some point. I mean, that grant program is, is open and available, and as Rob says, we have in the past, you know, so.
I would, you know, I, I applaud what you're saying, Brandy, but I, I think I'm with Steve in that a Super Bowl win like this, I mean, what was it, nineteen ninety-four or nineteen ninety-five was the last time our football team reached this accomplishment? And I think to help recognize the And I think to help recognize the work and and as you said, I think part of the story is the fact, you know, with P J and and Jake, and that is what drove this football team or part of what drove this football team. So for me, I think we should recognize what the team has accomplished. And I sup- I think the Cocker Club is important, but I would say, you know, what Joe was saying is if we feel that there's another way we want to help contribute to the Cocker Club, then do that. But this is an accomplishment that, as a town, we have supported. I mean, I was at the, I I wasn't able to go to the game, but I was there at the send off from the high school and the fact that our police department and our fire department and so many people were out.
Community driven.
Really, the community was behind this team, the support they gave at the different playoffs and things like that. So, I hear what you're saying in regards to giving it to the Cocker Club, but I think I personally would, you know, go with Steve and say, let's support this goal for the Super, for the Super Bowl championship and recognize the hard work that that took for them to get there and then look at, you know, if the clock, you know, if the Cocker Club wants to come to us with the B A A grant program and then donate at that point.
F M A, Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
Being the only alumnus that played football.
You're the only true Cocker here, so.
I'm the only true.
We're all, we're all Cuckers by heart.
Let's see you bleed a little blue here.
I did many a time.
Go ahead, Joe.
Don't, don't go there, Mike. We had some real lean years and for that, for the accomplishment that they that they have achieved, it's, 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 it was remarkable and it was, it was, it was greatly appreciated by the entire community and I'm sure everybody will agree to that. But I also agree with Brandy that there are other, there are other groups out there that, you know, that work just as hard. And, and, um, I'd like to see maybe a compromise to give them the twenty-five and take the other twenty-five that you were recommending and put it towards the Cocker Club, so that way, if there are students that are out there that cannot afford the the tuition, oh, I know that the Cocker Club does that and helps that out and they have that fund. Who knows, there could be another young fellow out there, another young lady out there that's playing, uh, a sport that could be paramount to it, to to their team. And because they don't have the ability or the funding to do so, they don't play. So, you know, you're losing, you're losing out on on some.
I do think, in essence, we're doing part of that here, supporting, uh, a, uh, an athlete that couldn't necessarily afford the ring if he had to go out and buy it himself. They are going to be doing fundraising, I understand. I I did have a conversation with with, uh, Lisa Duennell's who kind of coordinated this. And so they're doing a variety of things and, uh.
See, one of, one of the things that I I fall back on with the experience was that in 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 the year two thousand when the, uh, baseball team won the state championship, um, which my son was a part of, I saw the hard work that the entire team did and the parents and the support staff that they had. We got them jackets, it was a little cheaper, we looked at rings, but a lot of the kids didn't want the rings because they put it in the drawer, at least with the jackets they were wearing. Type of deal. Now, I understand the rings are great and, you know, you look at, you know, the Patriots and they've got six Super Bowl rings or whatever and they want to.
That's the benchmark.
That's the benchmark, right? So, you know, they're flashing their bling around. Many of these high school kids are not going to flash this bling around at a college, I assure you.
But this, you know, what's before us, though, is a request to support the rings and acknowledging that there are kids that don't necessar- or can't necessarily afford it, so.
I just, I just think we can do, it it, if we, if we donated it specifically to the Cocker Club in honor of the football team and they decide how they want to allocate it, I think it's just, to me, I love our football team, I think they did an awesome job, but I don't want to prioritize football over all other things.
Well, I don't think we're doing that.
That we're prioritizing, I think we're just.
That's the question, I think we're supporting a request for a special, a special.
Something doesn't happen quite often.
Could I, could I, um, say something? So, you know, Coach McKay did ask for twenty-five hundred and he does seem to have a plan, so that would, you know, and I kind of like Joe's idea of maybe splitting it because that kind of, you know, putting the other, if we, if we think we have five thousand available, maybe the other twenty-five hundred goes to the Cocker Club and we can kind of, because one of the things, if we give the whole five thousand to Cocker Club, we're kind of delegating the decision to those folks and I don't, you know, kind of maybe put a lot of pressure on them. So, maybe I I kind of like the hybrid of Joe and Brandy's idea to split the the five and, you know, if you, if we really think we have five thousand available, maybe that's the way to go.
You and I should know that because we get the.
Yeah, you get the request.
Yeah, and I guess it's, you know, juggling and what other, what else is out there.
And realize also that we're at the beginning of our marathon, uh, process here, the grants, uh, so our runners will will be replenishing our our program. So, I I, you know, I can, I I get both, so, you know.
Here's a suggestion. I I applaud you wanting to give them more than the twenty-five hundred. So, what if we bump this request to three thousand? That is what one runner brings in. And then we look at, in the grant process, reaching out to the Cocker Club to say, submit a grant.
I I I kind of.
Or bump it to the five thousand.
Kind of moving, I'm kind of moving it to the hybrid approach. I think, you know, uh, just, I think if we do, uh, support this request and then take the additional twenty-five and and do it in s- in recognition of of the two fallen athletes, uh, do it that way and, uh, you know, I think, uh.
And then if they come in with a question in the spring.
Good gesture for.
Yeah.
So.
Sure.
So if that, you know.
Sure.
Make a motion and let's move on.
I move that we approve the request for twenty-five hundred dollars from Coach McKay for the football team and then we also match that with twenty-five hundred dollars to the Cocker Club in the name of P J Ferrier and Jake Silver.
Okay, good work.
Second.
So, second, motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good. Thank you, Brandy.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, next item is an update on the Ashland Post Office. Unfortunately, uh, there's not much of an update. Uh, this is through, actually Congresswoman Clark's office. Not, not from Congresswoman Clark herself, but through her office. So, we had two updates and 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 I'll have Susan, uh, reflect as well because I think she looked at it, uh, as well. So, on one three, the update was, "Post Office Remains Closed." Their assessments are complete and they are awaiting a formal report and proposal. Once that has occurred, the process will move swiftly in awarding a contract for repairs. So that was on January the third. On January the fourteenth, yesterday, not much has changed. A completed assessment is expected to be in project specialist hands by the end of next week. The specialist then will review all the options and make a decision. So, we still have some unknowns, uh, but it seems clear that their, our post office will reopen at some point.
All right, well, that's good.
Can we ensure or double check with them that they're actually taking the mail from the mailbox that's sitting in front of the post office?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah. Susan, does that information?
There goes my excuse.
Marry yours?
Yes. And what I've been trying to do is, as soon as I get something, I send it up to the staff and I put it up on the website just so that everybody knows.
Okay, appreciate it.
And and just, just to add something to that, uh, I know everybody knows about Five Cedar Street in in Hopkinton with the post offices, but there's also a secondary post office in Southborough on eighty-five. There's a little strip mall right before, uh, Eversource.
That's their main, that's their main post office in Southborough.
So it's almost the same distance from, you know.
Unless you have a post office box.
If you have a post office box, you have to go to Hopkinton to pick up your mail.
I'm just saying, if you needed to.
Yeah.
Get stamps or whatever, it's just as, just the different, the difference, distance wise is the same.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, moving on, last, uh, item under Old New Business is Economic Development Incentive Program for Two Morrows Cafe, three seventy-two Union Street, twenty thousand dollars for equipment and twenty thousand dollars for rental reimbursement. So, Michael, can you?
So, as it says, it's twenty thousand dollars for equipment, which would actually include, um, a gas griddle and refrigerator purchase and then also a twenty thousand dollars for rental reimbursement. Obviously, we know the plaza where it is. It's another good example of leveraging private investment by putting in some more public dollars. So, the applicant's already made a personal investment of three hundred thousand of renovations in that space. So, um, and by most accounts, I've heard it's been a very, very successful.
It's been amazing.
Month, um, it is. It's an incredible, you know, driving, driving by, it just looks like a nice upscale diner.
They did a really nice job inside.
Beautiful inside and the waitstaff is terrific, they've got plenty of service. So it's a great addition to, uh, our our restaurant choices. The Ashland Tour de Burger had a great experience.
I was going to ask, I hadn't, haven't seen the, uh, reviews yet, so.
So, the Economic Development Advisory Group, um, voted unanimously to support this application and, um, I support it as well, obviously, so.
All right, do we take any action on this?
You, you need to vote to approve it.
Oh, okay.
Right, so.
So it's a total of forty or?
So it would be a total of forty, so it'd be the equipment and then the twenty thousand for the rental reimbursement.
Take a motion?
I move that we approve and support the, um, money to Two Morrows Cafe, twenty thousand dollars for equipment and twenty thousand dollars for rental reimbursement through our Economic Development Incentive Program.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that carries five zero, so congratulations and welcomes to Two Morrows.
I highly recommend, if you have not checked them out, check them out.
What is it, breakfast and lunch?
Breakfast and lunch, and on Sundays, they only serve breakfast for the whole time.
My son, who's a breakfast connoisseur, literally, he could eat breakfast all day long, like stamp of approval, so.
It's amazing, like this incentive program, what, I mean, you think about the at, the restaurants that have opened and have taken advantage of this, so you have the Blockbuster, Maisy, Mazzy. Two Morrows, you know, Dulce de Leche, which put in almost a million dollars. Erica's, it's, um, it's been really incredible. Think, you know, Senator Spilka needs to be given some some credit for getting us a hundred thousand dollars in additional funding for this program. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do all of these things that we have been doing recently, we would have to wait each year to reload.
Right, to reload, yes, that's great, yeah.
Are there other businesses in town that have been in town for a while that need to be revamped? That could use, or that could acquire this type of money as well, or do they have to meet certain criterias that? They don't have to be new businesses.
No.
No, no, they don't have to, they don't have to be new businesses, but they do have to demonstrate the, that the investment is going to leverage private investment and that it hopefully will create jobs. You know, in some cases, that's not always the case.
But keep jobs.
Keep jobs.
Yeah.
In the case with all the restaurants, we're closely keeping track of the meals tax and what that's, you know, what it translates to that way. But we, we have a number of existing businesses that utilize this, not these so much as like the Sign and Facade Program. Like, we just looked at one on Nickerson Road, believe it or not, to do a groundskeeper.
Chofu.
Yeah.
That could use some beautification.
Yeah.
Certainly could.
So.
It'll be interesting as we bring on one twenty-six, if if existing businesses on one twenty-six decide to take part in this because that would be a really good way to improve, improve their facades.
Very good.
Well, McDonald's is doing it right now, I mean, they're revamping their whole place.
Again.
Again.
They just did it, what, three years ago? Yeah.
Now they'll be doing it all over. They, after, they shut down for.
Yeah.
About a month.
Something like that.
So.
Okay. All right, moving on, we're already at Town Manager Reports. I just want to make note that our agenda does not include board reports, which was an error.
Oh, good.
So, but we are still going to take the opportunity to have board reports. So, uh, I know that's the most exciting part of our agenda, so not to worry. All right, so Town Manager Reports.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'm going to start with actually the EPA, um, proposed Niaza Plan.
Yep.
So, for those of you that are not aware, um, when Niaza was first being addressed, there were a couple of, um, a couple of solutions that were proposed for what's known as Operational Unit Two, which is where the vaults and the lagoons were, and most of those chemicals have sunken into the the bedrock in the soil and that's what leads to the plume, the groundwater plume, is groundwater flows, um, east towards downtown. So that's, um, that is what's known as Operational Unit Two. So they have right now an extraction system, um, they have two extraction wells where they extract what's known as Deanapple, which is the really dense, uh, toxic chemical and extract that and take it off site. So, it's not yielding the results, um, that they thought it would be in terms of reduction of the groundwater plume. Groundwater plume is still staying relatively sa- stable, they're seeing some decreases, but not anything near where they expected it to be fifteen years after implementing this, uh, solution. So, um, especially after we had the conversation around Sears Apartments and the R T D, we really started, um, advocating for them to really come up with a new solution for Operational Unit Two. And so they've been working on that and so they've come up with a recommended plan. Now, they've done this by looking at a number of different alternatives, doing some more site investigation. They started out with about ten alternatives, they narrowed that down to, I believe it was, uh, five or six, which they did a full investigation on in terms of, or analysis, um, based on a number of variables. The permanence of the remedy and the easy, ease of implementation of the remedy, the cost, um, and a couple of other categories. All of this stuff is detailed in a report that they've recently released and it should be available, um, on the EPA website and we should probably make it available on our website as well. Yeah, so they're, they're going to have a meeting on what their recommended plan is, which is, I think it's known as G W four. It's highlighted in the report.
So thi- this is a copy of the, uh, report that's on the EPA website. I recommend that you you go through it. A lot of it is technical, you can bypass, but, you know, gives very important information about the the number, the, the options that they were, uh, pursuing. They're looking at the dollar cost for each, but more important, the impact of each, uh, of each proposal on how it impacts the plume downtown. And it's not an easy, you know, uh, decision to say this is better than this because it's got implications in terms of.
Things, right.
Of how it impacts wetlands, how it impacts downtown drilling.
Vapor mitigation.
All, all these things, so, but I recommend you dig into it. We have that meeting on, uh, the twenty-third, which is Thursday next, is it next Thursday?
It's, it's next Thursday at the high school.
At the high school for, that's, uh, going to be their, their public hearing, so.
Well, a couple of things I want to make note. Um, I did have a meeting with the EPA yesterday to talk about this in advance. Two things that really stuck out, um, at me was, A, some of, their, the plan that they recommended seemed a little bit deficient in some ways compared to some of the other plans that were evaluated. What I found out is that none of these plans have been funded. So, the process is, is that EPA is going through the, going to get public comment on what their proposed plan is, incorporate that, um, and at some stage of the game, make any kind of modifications or submit that plan as is to the EPA for funding. And this is where I think some of the strategy kind of goes into play. What they're re- recommending, that program costs twenty million dollars. You know, the one that has, you know, off the chart scores in terms of, um, in terms of permanence in site stability is closer to sixty million dollars. So, clearly, everybody's competing for limited federal dollars and I think they're even more limited under this administration. So, it's just one of those things that we're going to have to kind of weigh and help the EPA balance.
And I think this is, uh, a situation where we, we do need to get Congresswoman Clark's office involved, engaged in this.
I agree.
What's the time for that meeting, is there seven, is it seven?
Six thirty to eight.
Six thirty.
Six thirty to eight. The other thing, and actually Roberta brought this up, was there's a lot of reference in the report to things called institutional controls, but they're very, very vague. And what they allude to is, um, basically restrictions on things that are happening within the plume area, like downtown, so redevelopment, some of our own work. I was very cautious of that and I, you know, really kind of drilled down with them what that meant. They really don't have any kind of specific definition or idea in place other than formalizing some of the processes that we have put in place.
Protocols for, you know.
After the Sears development. So, one twenty-eight Main was a very, very good example of this. We made them, when they were doing their investigation, do some soil borrowings, do some gas, uh, test results. They actually sent that in. They actually sent that information to the EPA. The EPA provided a comment and provided recommendations on what they would like to see in terms of a vapor mitigation barrier, a couple of other things. And we were then able to incorporate that into our decisions. Um, but all of that happened informally. Um, another thing is when we were looking at doing the downtown project and doing the undergrounding of the utilities, there's a chance that groundwater will be encountered during that process. EPA has advised us that the best thing to do would be to have a health and safety plan put in place, and also have a, a gas spectrometer in place onsite during the work. And so if you get elevated readings at any, any point in time, you have a protocol in place and you know what to do at that point. This does not, this would not impact public safety at all, just this.
Construction safety.
We have this construction work, uh, it's all really focused on construction worker safety. But again, that is informal at this point, it hasn't been formalized. So I, I think the discussion is going to be, you know, how can we more formalize those processes and codify them going forward so that long after we're gone, um.
Any construction that happens in that space.
Yeah, and, and you'll, you'll be amazed when you read the report, because each option describes, um, uh, work that would be done at the Niaco site. Uh, and as Michael describes, this is what impacts the plume downstream. But each option has a time associated with the plume reaching a point that it becomes, it's, it's not a factor. One is six hundred years, one is four hundred years, one is a hundred years. So now, I don't know, you know, it's, those are shocking numbers, uh, but, you know, Michael and I were talking earlier today, and, you know, that's not necessarily an unusual situation, given, you know, the fact that, you know, we live in a, in industrialized state or area.
Right.
Right, and there's lots of these polluted.
Right. And Rob, before you ask, because I know it's coming. Um, so things like the Upper Charles Trail and like the UGC development, that is all up gradient from the site. So there is not nearly the type of concern that there is in terms with the groundwater.
I actually already heard your answer, so I wasn't gonna ask.
Okay, well, I figured you might ask, just for everybody watching at home.
Well, it's a good point, so.
I do have one question with respect to what you just said moments ago, um, with respect to the trench area. And God forbid they find something or something is there, but that's prevalent. How did, that's gonna affect our timetable with respect to the downtown development project?
Um, based on a lot of the groundwater sampling and the borings that we've taken, and, I mean, we have a lot of monitoring wells downtown, we don't anticipate encountering that much. I mean, obviously, if you remember the West Union Sewer Project, and we hit, um, a water table that was almost like four feet underground, and we just were constantly having to vacuum that stuff out. Um, yeah, if we encounter something like a surprise like that, it's gonna complicate things. But that would be whether or not it was contaminated or not.
Right. And that's why you have contingencies and plans in place, so.
Yeah.
The mon- the monitoring in place that should something happen, you know how to handle it right away.
Exactly, it's, it's about preparing, anticipating what could happen, having things in place where you're not running around like a chicken with your head cut off when things actually, if and when they actually do happen.
So does the downtown.
That was interesting, I mean, that's a good point, because I think one of the, uh, the firefighters we approved tonight has extensive emergency management experience, as I recall, in his, his resume, related to this.
Related to the.
Yeah, so.
Just a question, is our, um, is the Niaza Committee still active?
No.
No, so?
No.
They're out of the picture now, right?
No, it's, it's not active, but I think you could probably regroup and provide some.
You could probably group, but at the same time, it's, when the EPA was finishing up, and they still haven't finished their, uh, their five-year plan report, um, basically everything that they said they were going to do is, is being done. We were more concerned about, uh, uh, vapor mitigation, uh, plans, and, and that, that was a concern that we have, so we were.
Well, that's still should be a concern, because when you re- read the report.
Right.
The vapor mitigation systems that exist, they're, they're voluntary. They're not, and they're not being monitored, uh, necessarily. So I would say that would be a concerning issue for, uh, for those properties.
We did, we did, we did say to the EPA group when they came, um, that, that was one of our concerns, is that the lack of, uh, monitoring those that already have the systems.
Right.
Uh, is, is relevant for us, so.
And it's, it's a unique problem, because EPA can't mandate getting in there, I mean, it's, it's a voluntary program, right?
Yeah.
I just wanted to point out that if people can't make it to the meeting on the, the twenty-third, that if you go into the report, there's contact information and they're taking public comments until February fourteenth, so.
And WACA is gonna film the meeting on the twenty-third, that they'll then rebroadcast.
So there's ways to, to, um, have public comment.
It'll be an important meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you know if our legislators are gonna be there?
Um, I don't know.
I'm sure their representatives will be there, if they're not there directly, I'm sure, so. All right, next item.
Yeah, website redesign, I think we got another meeting coming up soon, we've.
Friday.
Yeah, Friday, so we've got a, we're at a point where we're mapping out our current website, um, actually getting some statistics of what people go to. You'd be surprised. Maybe disappointed, you know, so it's, um, it's pretty interesting. Um, but we have that, and then we've also got a couple of websites as, as other Civic Plus.
Right.
Uh, branded websites that we are looking at as potentially, for lack of a better term, I think, models or templates that we could, we could utilize. So, um, that is moving along, so that's good.
Good.
Any questions about that, or?
Yeah, looking forward to, uh, seeing the report back on it and see what you come back with.
We'll have something to show you guys, I think, pretty soon, I mean, I'm, I say soon, but I don't know how quickly Civic Plus can, can give us sort of a test site to like show, I mean, that's a question I have for Paul on Friday anyway.
Yeah, that'll be interesting.
But, you know, the good thing is, is I think, when I went through our website, um, the content is really there, um, ninety percent of the content is really there, it's just needing to be organized in a different way. So I think the way that we had all agreed on at our last meeting as how to organize it, I think, is a really good starting point. And I kind of went through and I did a site map, and I was like, oh, okay, I feel pretty good about where it is and how, I don't think it's gonna be a ton of work to get the links and the, the, the pages, at least on the, the top-line navigation kind of in place, so.
Cool, good, yeah. Now you can, you know, it just, uh, y- you can just appreciate the complexity of all that information that we have.
There's a ton of information.
Right, yeah.
And it's being updated all the time as people post meetings and agendas and meeting minutes and.
But it's not being updated enough, and I'm gonna reserve that thought for later tonight, so.
Could you see?
It'd be continued.
Could you see?
Um, sh- you wanna move on to twenty-one budget update?
Sure.
All right, so we're, you know, we've started putting really kind of the bare-bones budget, you know, when I mean bare-bones, I mean, we've got our conservative rest- or preliminary revenue estimates, we know what some of our fixed costs are going to be, we've got departments, um, you know, department head requests and things like that put in. Um, we will be having, um, our first meeting with FinCom, which is the televised hearing, so under the charter, we're supposed to deliver it to FinCom, um, a certain time period before town meeting, um, on February fourth, so the night before our select board meeting at that point in time. And so we'll be giving, um, an update and an overview, just kind of where we are financially, where things look like from a fixed cost standpoint, um, what some of the departments, um, are, are looking at, and some of the things that we're looking at doing in terms of initiatives, and really some of the things that are driving the budget this year. One is going to be the public safety building and how we're financing that. Um, the school department has started their budget process as well. Um, if you recall, under our financial policies, they go up automatically three point seven five percent, municipal departments go up two point five. Um, they are identifying some, just to maintain a level service budget, they're gonna need to go, I think, about four hundred thousand dollars over that. And I think to do, some of the things that they need to do, it, it would be somewhere around nine hundred thousand dollars over that. Um, at this point in time, we are, w- we can't accommodate that right now. Um, but there's a couple of big things that are hanging out there, and this is, this is really important, is the, um, governor's budget should be released. And I'm anticipating an increase, um, in state aid, everybody's making a big deal about this Educational Opportunities Act. I'm hoping that translates into real dollars for Ashland, that, you know, we will see and we will be able to utilize. Um, having said that, I was really excited about that, because I thought it was going to be, um, pretty good. And then you get notification today that the state is actually looking at a significant budget shortfall, which could potentially impact some of the things that we.
Well, that's right, so I did send out that Globe article to, to everyone, uh, earlier today, just to put some reference points to it, but, uh, uh, state faces nine hundred million dollar budget gap, and this is through the, the Mass Taxpayers Foundation.
Which budget, the new budget?
The new budget, yeah, now that's not unusual, that, uh, we see this kind of.
To start.
To start with, but, you know, what's concerning is that most experts are, are showing or predicting a slowing in revenue growth.
Their revenue forecasts are down.
Are down, so, uh, not just at the state level, I mean, that's, that's in the economy in general.
In general, yeah. So, um, I, I think what, the sense that I'm getting instinctually is that, you know, we're really not gonna know kind of where things are until probably mid-February, late February.
Yeah.
And.
And do we know on the, on the school side, you know, they have the three point seven five percent increase, they're saying they're potentially gonna need more, that, you know, they're gonna be willing to pull back, if necessary?
I, I think everything's on the table, um, I've, I've got a, a lot of faith in Jim and the school committee to kind of look under every rock and, and do everything, you know. They're just kind of putting things together right now. If we just put our, all of our budget requests in, you know, we would show.
We'd be up there as well, sure.
As well, so.
So could we, is that an exercise we could do and take a look at? I mean, look at all the budget requests, you know, I understand we have a percentage that we're trying to stay within, but then, you know, as we're ma- as you're making decisions.
Mm-hmm.
Are there things that might be better to do A versus B?
Yeah.
I mean, li- is, you know, rather than just saying, okay, we're gonna go to within our percentage, are, do we wanna look at, this is, this is what we'd like to do, and then this is what we're gonna do because it's the right path?
Well, I do tell all the departments to do, you know, to do just that, to give visibility. And, you know, we're still in that mindset where, you know, we're, a lot of people who've been here for a while are just kind of like in that s- cut-and-scramble kind of mode, it's hard for them to think that way. So you don't necessarily get equity across the departments in terms of what they're thinking. But yes, we, we usually, especially the, the big departments, um, we usually talk about that at the FinCom meeting. And i- if you have time, it'd be great to go, you know, to the FinCom meeting.
Yeah, on the fourth, okay.
I'm gonna try to do that as well.
But, you know, we'll have presentations from the Police Department, the Fire Department, DPW, um, a couple of the smaller departments we usually try to roll in each year, in addition to kind of the big overview and the big issues.
I bet you think you'll cover that one meeting, um, that's on the fourth you're talking about, right?
Yeah, we usually, we're usually able to, to cover quite a bit of ground, it's a long night, but, you know, that's.
So, uh, the Mass Municipal Association, uh, conference coming up, and that's when the governor starts to release his, his budget. And, uh, I would expect just from what I read is that, uh, you know, the, there's gonna be substantial dollars applied to the.
School choice.
Transportation.
Oh, yeah.
You, you mean the overall transportation system, well, I think we can all agree that that is something that's desperately needed, so.
Yeah, so, but that's to be determined, so, uh, all right. So we have, uh, FinCom, uh, on the fourth of February, and then our select board meeting on the fifth.
And we should have some budget stuff also specifically for the select board meeting as well the next night, so, um, I think, um, I'm anticipating Brittany to be here, so, for a couple of things.
Good, good. Okay, next item.
Right, the next item is the Communications and Cultural Events Coordinator, um, I believe this was sent out to you, I did get it, I did get some feedback. I don't, I don't feel like I necessarily have to repeat myself, I think we've talked about this a couple of times, but, um, and I think the memo kind of lays it out. I think, you know, for what we're, what the public expects of us right now, um, our current organizational structure, our current staffing structure really can't accommodate that, and, um, namely, uh, communications and this growth in events that are happening throughout town. Um, communications, it's just, you know, just to keep up in a reactive stance is actually impossible for us to do right now. It seems, just g- given all the platforms that you have to release information, we can't, um, w- we can't do that under our existing structure. Um, and then we can't do some of the proactive things that really, I think, would, um, nix some of the reactive things that have to happen. If we can actually get ahead of a few things, talk about things that aren't necessarily newsworthy at the moment, but are important, um, get people inside, let them have visibility as to what happens in committees, what happens when you're trying to get ready for town meeting. What's it like to, you know, be out in a snowstorm? You know, these are all, I mean, I think they might sound fun, or they might sound trivial, or they might sound actually like an extra, but in this day and age, it's what people expect. And I think it leads to another level of civic engagement that we continually talk about and want to do. Um, right now, i- I mean, it's diluted, I think, across a number of different departments, but, you know, one person that really handles a lot of the load, especially with the social media stuff, is Beth, um, who's the Economic Development Coordinator, and a person we play, we pay a small stipend to, as she's going through graduate school and, and working another job. Um, and then, so moving on to the cultural events co- you know, cultural events things, I think that's another thing where we're really seeing a, um, a positive benefit, I think, from having a lot of these things, these events that we're having, just in terms of community building, in terms of building a relationship between, let's just say, lack of a better term, government officials and people, and then people amongst themselves. You know, we're providing places and we're providing opportunities for people to generate that sense of community. Um, but it does take a lot of work, and I, I think I said it in my memo, as noble as it is for volunteers to want to do that, what we're finding is that it's not consistent and, and to no fault of their own, and it basically leaves us behind the eight ball. And so, um, you know, so I'm recommending, you know, creating a, a position that would really, I mean, I think each element of that could justify its own full-time position, no, I, I have no doubt about that. But I think we are frugal, for lack of a better word, and we're trying to do what we can with what we have. And so I think one position that would cover both of these, um, both of these efforts, I think, is appropriate at the time, and is, it is something that we need, and, uh, I'm not hesitant in asking for. Just to get with some of the finances, you know, we'd be looking at a position that's around forty-three to fifty, um, and.
Is that all in, or is that their just salary?
That would just be their salary, that would just be the salary. Um, and then we would split that between several different departments in the general fund. We wouldn't take away service from things, from current, current service levels. And then we would also utilize some of that meals tax economic development fund, because part of communications would be talking about marketing, part of the events are about marketing and economic development as well. I think about illuminate, um, not illuminate Ashland, but when we did the tree lighting.
Hmm.
Uh, this year, Joe, and we had so many people go to restaurants from that point, you know, there's definitely an economic development element to this, and so.
So, uh, to start the, the discussion, I, uh, my observation, and I haven't done, you know, deep research on this, but it seems like this is something that many communities, uh, like Ashland, uh, like in Ashland, are, are dealing with, are looking at, are installing communications directors or whatever, coordinators, whatever you wanna call it. And I just, I pulled off, um, Medways, Medway has a, actually their website's very good, I think, what?
No, I'm ch- yes, yes, I agree, I agree.
But they have a communications director, and they, they lay out, uh, and there's some overlap, but the one question I had, looking at their communications person, is the Department of Communications promotes communication of essential information to town residents and serves as a point of contact for any questions or concerns. Now, that's not this particular position.
This is a coordinator, this is not a director.
Okay.
This is gonna be a central point where people will.
This is gonna be a central point where people will provide information, and that, that person will be able to dispense that, the events and, and other things are coordinated that way through, through this person.
Yes, that, you know, that, that's part of the role. I think with regards to the website, you're only as good as the, the content that you're refreshing.
That person updating this on a, on a daily basis.
So, you know, this person would, you know, be the one that would go to, to different departments and say, you know, we haven't updated anything on this, let's, you know, let's refresh it, let's put some new content up, it's like that.
The one thing, oh, go, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, in the MMA, the latest, I think it was the latest newsletter, they talked about social media policy. I thought it was, I don't know if you guys had a chance, Nate, I forget which, was it Andover, somebody like that. But they actually had a policy where all the, they didn't talk about elected officials or volunteers. It, it was mostly about town staff.
This is all about staff, had nothing to do with.
Yeah, and they actually went on Facebook, pretty much on their own, to make statements or to respond to questions, which I thought was interesting. They used the equivalent of Ashland Bulletin Board for all, for their communication, really. They posted things there, they responded, they answered questions.
So to go to your, your point, and to quote the article.
Yeah.
It's recommend, this particular consultant recommended that cities and towns establish rules of engagement for staff to follow. Share the responsibility across departments, rely on employees with sound judgment, and know the town's social media players. So, I mean, I think, you know, obviously, towns are, are, are dealing with this.
And so, I don't know if, Michael, the, but this, I, I, it doesn't sound like you're looking at this as kind of a centralized, more of a person that would be assisting people in all this, right? Is that basically?
Well, I think you can accomplish both. So it is kind of that central person where things are going to be flowing from different departments and different committees even, boards and committees. So this person could help articulate a better big-picture vision, and knows how one, maybe stuff from one department would fit in, work from another com- committee that's happening. I, you know, I'm fortunate enough, and Jen's fortunate enough to have that, kinda have that visibility, but to be able to translate that into, we're dealing with management, management of that coordination, not necessarily the dissemination of that information as much as they are kind of tied together. And Andover's a situ- I mean, I, I don't wanna speculate too much on Andover's situation, but, you know, I think they do have, you know, some issues between management and labor there that I, I think are flaring up, you know, on social media, which is unfortunate. And, you know, hopefully we'd never get to that point, but.
The, and.
It's another discussion.
And you kind of heard my concern, so right, you know, the, the, one example, like the Upper Charles Trail people, whether, you know, feel like they could use more resources or assistance, whether, you know. And so, one thing I would look at, a place like, a person like this could at least, if not working directly to help a project like that, which is hopefully gonna be heating up in the next few years, but at least free up other staff to be more proactive. And hopefully that's something, you know, whether it's information, or brochures, or just communication, or assisting with grants, or trying, you know, so hopefully a position, you know, you see a position like that can be helpful in that situation?
Yeah, and I think, you know, we, we kind of, we kind of talked about a few different elements. I mean, I don't think this position would be able to do, like a GIS map. I do think this person could potentially free up some of the things that our other department heads are doing, or staff are doing, so that they could do, you know, something like that. And then also help with some of the graphical presentation of information.
Yes.
And I think that's, I think that would be, I feel like that would be helpful.
That's a good one, yeah, that's a good one.
I also think, to, to Rob's point too, like, you know, when we think about net zero and how we're gonna have to get the word out and how to get people buy in. Last week, Ash had said, you know, had mentioned, you know, we need, we need branding around it, and it's kind of true. We, we do need to, to have education and, and a website and things that, that people can go to to understand how that's gonna impact them. And I think this role would be something that would be really, really helpful for that. I also think that generally the public would love to be able to know what's going on, snippets from different committees. So if this person could pull together information of what's happening, you know, reach out to the, to the Planning Board once a month and say, you know, give us an update of what's, what's, what you've approved and what's coming up in the next couple of weeks. And the same thing with the school committees. So people know what's, you know, what's happening in other committees and, and groups in town. I also think, I mentioned this to, to, to Michael, but I think, you know, we need someone that can do a little bit of proactive PR with the press. You know, we don't get a ton of coverage, at least proactive coverage, so, you know.
Not too many towns do anymore.
No, and we're not a huge town.
You don't even have a reporter in town, so.
Yeah, so it's, so, you know, some things like that. And I, I think that, that having a person that can run, run point a little bit would be helpful.
Surveys, surveys.
Surveys.
But I, I think to that point, like the, the media piece, so, you know, I always try to keep a list of things that, you know, in a slow period, we could, we could always talk about. And it's good, I'm able to update that maybe once a quarter. And, you know, when a Cesario or Susan Petroni gives me a call, you know, if I'm looking at things that are, you know, a couple of months old already, it's kind of, bless you. It's a little bit stale at that point in time. But, you know, somebody who can keep up with that, like on a monthly basis, I think would be, you know, would be very helpful.
The one thing else I wanna just say, I know that when you had sent us the, the, the job description, you had called it Communication slash Cultural Events. And maybe, maybe we wanna broaden that, instead of saying cultural events, just saying community events. Because I think cultural is part of it. But I don't know if we, you know, I know that the, the Cultural Council definitely needs some help with some of the events that they do, but not limit that to just, just broaden the scope a little bit, I would suggest.
I would second that statement.
I, I would, I would just push back, I think, I was just gonna mention, I had a meeting last week with the Newton Cultural Development Director. And Newton's a city, big city, there's, you know, thirteen villages, lots going on. It's, it's a big position just in itself. But they, they call it cultural, you know, I think, to me, community is implied in that. But, you know, I, that's, that's semantics. But it was really good, got to meet the Mayor of, of Newton, Ruth Ann Foster, very nice. But it was very enlightening as to how they go to task with their cultural events. Because it's, again, they're trying to coordinate a lot of moving parts, and they, it's just integral to their, their economy.
Interesting. Right. So.
I, I just have one last financial question, because currently Beth does not manage anybody, I mean, maybe the intern. So how will this impact her salary, because she will now be having to manage somebody? And what does that do to your budget? And, you know, I guess, I guess I'm sort of looking for also, you know, we know that there'll be, if this is a brand-new position, we have the OPEB issue that we have to add in, and. It's sort of like a more full-budget picture for the position. And then, I mean, I, I read the description, and I would agree with Brandy in regards to, you know, one of the, one of the, the descriptions was that they would have to work with the Cultural Council. I think that's, I mean, and I know that was just an example, but I think there are other things that are going on. It's not just cultural events or other events, so that would be my only.
And as you said, I mean, that's totally just was an example, it's not meant to be any kind of limitation. But the, you know, the budgetary impact, yes, it would mean that Beth would be managing somebody else. And I would say at some point in time, we would have to look at adjustment, really not just for that, but actually from more of a performance standpoint as well. I mean, those are two different things. But I don't expect that to be any, I don't expect that to lead us to a point where we, again, siphoning off services from, from something else. You know, the benefits, we, we can, we do have a good plan now in place of, of OPEB. So we're, this is not an unfunded liability that we would be taking on.
Right, I understand.
There's actually a piece to it. But I think the benefits would far, you know, far outweigh the benefits of the position. Not necessarily the benefits of a position, would be, would far outweigh, I think, any of the costs.
So these would be just town events and not school events, or both?
Um, I, I mean, I was thinking specifically town events.
Town events, okay. Just curious.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I was, my initial thought was, well, I don't know if we really distinguish that, that anymore, but we do. I think especially in the events level, yeah.
Still do, yeah.
Well, the, the reason why I ask that, say that is because there have been many events that have, but it has with other programs that the school's putting on that people didn't know about, and scheduled something, so you had a scheduling issue.
Right, I mean, I definitely, I mean, certainly, I would hope one of the benefits would be, as we look at the new website design, is that we're creating a true community calendar, which is something we've talked about for many, many, many years, is that you need to go to the school site to see what's going on at the schools, and you need to go to the general government town website to see what's going on. I would hope that when we're looking at this new website design, we can pull from the school calendar into our community calendar so that I can look at one place and go, oh, look, there's a thing there, that, oh, look, there's, you know. Or if I'm planning something, I'm looking at one calendar that says, oh, well, there's an open house for this particular age group. Okay, maybe it would be good not to have another event at that time, or vice versa. I would hope that our schools would go, okay, oh, look, it's town meeting that night, let's not have a Girl Scout, you know. I, I think, I mean, so I, I mean, I, I am understanding the benefits of this position. It's just making sure that it's a financial, financially sustainable, right? I mean, we were just talking about potential economic downturns and, and things like that, so, you know, I'd hate to bring someone on board, and then in a year ago, in a year ago, in a year, say, okay, well, you need to start looking at cuts, and where do we go? So that's, that's, again, just.
I can understand that, but you know, each time, each budget year, I talk about the fact that these, you know, these are, we're designing this stuff to be sustainable. When the downturn does happen, my whole goal is that, and I think I've pretty much shared this with staff too, my, my goal is to have things in a place where we're not cutting positions. I mean, there's some places that we would need to cut, but I don't wanna cut positions. We also have a healthy stabilization fund this year, too. It is, or not just this year, but. And that's what it's, I mean, I know people like to think I just like to sock money away and buy land and do stuff like that, but, no, in all seriousness, it's, it's going to happen. A downturn is going to happen.
Right.
And I think we talk about the equation all the time. If you have to lay off one person, or if you wanna save the equivalent of one person's salary, you have to lay off two people.
Right.
Because you have to accommodate for the unemployment benefits.
Right, right.
So, you know, and, and it's one thing that we were really, we really focused on in terms of this, you know, the safer grant. You know, can we do this?
And maintain it.
You know, not in year three, but when there are no grant funds. And, you know, Keith and Brittany and I worked to, okay, we could do this here, we could do this here. If this happens, we could do this here. And so I feel, I feel confident with that.
Okay, so let's get back on, on target here, so the request for the position.
Yeah, I, I'm requesting the board's support, so I guess that would, I mean, you could formalize that in, in a vote, so.
So if there's no further discussion or commentary?
I move that we approve the new position of Communications Events Coordinator with just, I ask that we get, you know, the little bit more detail financially.
Financially.
But otherwise, I think, so that, that's my, that's my motion.
Your motion, okay, that's a good motion.
Yeah, that we approve it.
I'll second that.
So, motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was gonna ask for a little discussion before.
All right, it's a discussion.
Uh, that's, no, that's fine, I can do it afterwards.
You can do your board reports.
Well, actually, can I just, so, my comment on this is that we make sure that we do a thorough search for the right person because I think it's important that if we're gonna create this new position, that it be someone who can really handle all the different aspects of what we're looking them to handle. And it may mean outside-of-the-box thinking as to who, who the person is, but I would ask that we do a thorough search for this position.
So that's not in the motion, but.
That's not in the motion, but that's, you know, yeah.
All right, so that passed five-zero, and so we, at some point, will have a Communications Coordinator and Community Events Coordinator. All right, uh, so. So we have, we have completed our agenda.
About ten o'clock.
And don't, don't, don't change it.
We'd get this done before ten.
Just be quiet, and let's move on.
Board report.
Go.
All right, so board reports, Joe, you're up.
Real simple. We haven't met in quite some time, so I'd like to thank Beth Reynolds for all the work that she put in for the Holiday Lighting Program. The event was fantastic. It, it generated a lot of interest, a lot of people showed up, a lot of families showed up, and it was a wonderful event. I know that the lights looked great, and I'm very thankful for everybody that was involved, all the volunteers that were there. It went, it went very, very well. And at some point, you know, when we hang this over to the other people who will be taking over from us, good luck. And, and, and all I can say is that I think we've got, you know, some good things going. As long as we can continue it and keep the tradition going, that would be, that would be great.
Very good.
Uh, the other thing is, Public Safety Meeting at nine AM tomorrow. Room's B and C downstairs here at the Town Hall. Anybody interested, come on down and join us. And just like to wish everybody here and, and out there a very Happy New Year. It's been a while. May you have and entertain great health and prosperity, but more importantly, health. And we've lost a lot of, a lot of great citizens in town over the last month or so. And to all those families out there who've lost loved ones that recently, my sincerest condolences. Lost a lot of dear friends over the last three or four weeks, and it's been, it, it's been a tough, tough beginning of the, of the two thousand twenty era. And with all that, with that in mind, I just hope everybody finds comfort in, in, in whatever they do.
Great, thank you, Joe. Yolanda?
So, also, Happy New Year, hard to believe it's already the fifteenth. I did like the red tree and the blue tree that were lit by the police and fire station downtown. Like, that was just, I really, I mean, I enjoyed all of it, but that was just really cool, the way. Couple of quick things, I was at a Metro West Regional Collaborative Meeting last week in Marlboro. We discussed the grant program that MAPC has. It was nice to hear that Frank is already in the process of, of looking at that for sustainability. A discussion that started, and it's something I'm gonna start looking at a little bit more, in regards to affordable housing issues, how some communities, it's difficult for them to create affordable housing because they're on septic and wells. So Sherborne is having the issue, Holliston is having some of the issue. And is, you know, are, is there an appetite for people to have a discussion about regional affordable housing numbers? And how could that work so that maybe Sherborne can't create it, but we can have affordable housing number? Students go to their schools, something, I don't know, but it's just, just out there. Because for us, it's even hard for us to get to our affordable housing number, and we have water and sewer in place. So it's just a discussion we've started having. Then I had the opportunity to sit with Tina, who is the newest member of the Holliston Select Board. She's their actually first female, she was elected in June or May. We were talking a little bit about our Shared Animal Control Officer, and I let Michael know some concerns. And she also was interested on our process for the Route One Twenty-Six Project, how we got it on the tip. So I've shared some of that with her, and I'm, I expect we'll do a little bit more on that. And then I will be attending the MMA Conference on the twenty-first, fourth, and twenty-fifth. I know a number of us are. Always a great opportunity to meet with fellow Select Board members and town managers and, and just get a lot of great ideas. I know we've always brought some cool things back.
I thought you went for the hospitality suites.
There's a couple of extra ones this year, so that could be fun.
Looking forward to hearing from you.
All right.
That's it, thank you.
Sure, um, one thing I wanted to announce, the Ashland Democratic Town Committee is, and the Holliston and Hopkinton one are getting together to host Jimmy Tingle for a fundraiser, so he is pretty funny.
He's funny.
So that's on Sunday, February sixteenth, from four to seven, right here at the Legion. So you can go on Facebook, are the Ashland Democratic Town Committee, so get your tickets soon, Joe. He's, he's, so, it's a fundraiser, if you, so, I threatened to keep you, you folks updated on the Transportation Climate Initiative. So, and if you recall, that's the eleven-state compact to sell or to auction off emissions on gas sales in the eleven-state area to raise money for transportation. transportation improvements, which I think we as municipal officials are very concerned about. To my mind, it's really the only kind of realistic funding source for the kinds of transportation infrastructure that we need in the coming years, which is, transportation is some like twenty-five percent of carbon production, so it's a big deal. But if, you probably been hearing about it, like the the governor of New Hampshire said, no way, you know, so it's really, um, and I I wouldn't be surprised if the governor talks about it.
Oh, I'm sure he will.
Yeah, so, um, there was a kind, there was an excellent, I'll just pass it around, but, uh, article in the Sunday Globe, uh, pros and cons. So I'll just pass it around to you folks here. Um, and it's interesting, uh, but anyway, so it's moving on and it's, I think it's gonna be more and more important in the coming years, and it's our one kind of, I think, you know, unless you want a big gas tax, it's our, it's one way of getting funding.
Just real quick on that, what's interesting is there was discussion that, okay, well, New Hampshire might be pulling out, but Pennsylvania is looking at joining.
Sure.
So it's not just New England, it's actually the whole, like, eastern.
Right.
I forget to how far down, so some members from MAPC
Right.
are heading down to DC, cause there's a big conference this weekend on that, so.
And, uh, so, um, and I did, I have some actually very favorable news on the Upper Charles Trail, so Michael and I, but listen to this, Michael and I, along with, um, Joel Harbiden and Tony Lewis, met with the, uh, the Board of Trustees of Pine Lake, which is the Voyager's Lane.
Mm-hmm.
And it was a very positive meeting. They, they liked the idea. They were, you know, asking questions, but they were looking at it very seriously, and, uh, that's like a first.
So where's, remind me where that is?
Oh, so, um, if you recall, if, as the trail gets to the the bottom of the, uh, Dunkin' Donuts, the access road, that corner of Pine Lake is directly across, and so the question from that, yeah, Voyager's Lane, the 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 issue with that corner is how to get to the State Park and to the Dyke Trail. And there's a number, we still have to get in touch with the President's Row people, cause that's, they're really part of this as well. But, uh, so we had, so what, the idea would be, or one of the the most, I guess, most prominent option is the trail would go, I guess, if you're looking down Voyager's Lane, on the left side of Voyager's Lane, fairly close to the trees, the green space, pretty much straight down and into the woods at the very end, and then from there, get to the State Park.
Perfect.
So, um, and that's kind of what we talked to them about along, so that was a very positive meeting.
That's great.
Nice to hear.
It's the start of a process, that I think, you know. And, uh, and, um, I think that was, oh, the only other thing I wanted to kind of maybe ask, you know, the, just to, um, carry on about that recycling question that Roberta, was it Roberta brought up earlier?
Deb.
Deb, uh, Deb, yeah, the, um, you know, Mike, I don't know, how how we look, like, what's next for recyc-, has has those folks approached us saying, you know, our market's falling apart, we gotta charge more, you know?
Yeah, they, um, but that was during the last, last, uh, negotiation we had. They, um, you know, it used to be that they paid us for recyclables. And, uh, basically it's gone down to zero. It's one of the reasons why the composting program is so important, because, you know, that's stuff that you can divert from the waste stream. You don't have to worry about the whole recycling issue.
So you can make, that'll make a real difference. Well, that's good. So, anyway, that's, yep, that's it.
Very good, thank you. So, Brandy, you and I have about five minutes, because I promised Jen that we were gonna end at ten tonight.
All right, I'm gonna be super quick. Um, so I also have a transportation update, a little bit different. It's really in regards to the commuter rail, which, um, as many people know or may not know, um, has been pretty much, the last few weeks has been kind of a disaster for the commuter rail system. We had two major incidents that happened. One the day after Christmas where the the train derailed at Lansdowne. And then we had another instance last week where there was a signal issue where people couldn't get home. So, but in general, the, on a daily basis, the commuter rail has not been a very dependable mode of transportation for so many people that commute into the city. So I've talked to Representative Lewis, and he is collecting, um, stories and, um, things from people, because he wants to be able to have a meeting with Keolis and the MBTA and really have a Metro West, uh, representation of what is happening on a daily basis with the commuter rail. So, um, I, we would ask that if if you can send in comments to Representative Lewis, to his email, it's jack dot Lewis at MAhouse dot gov. And even just, you know, the fact that the 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 fares have increased year over year and the level of service has decreased, and the, just on a daily basis, the overcrowding and the late trains or something that that we all deal with, and, um, if we do want to make sure that we have a transportation system that works, this is, you know, things that we need to fix and fix soon, because when we, when they come online with the the Alston multimodal project, the commuter rail is going to even be majorly affected by that as well. So that is,
ninety-four ninety-five project could be impacting people as well.
Right.
At around the same time.
It's an ongoing big deal.
Yep.
And the only other thing I wanted to mention is that, um, Saturday, I'm actually having office hours at the bagel table from nine to ten. So, um, I would love for people to come out and meet with me, and I'm hoping to do this on a monthly basis. I think it's good. I think it's, um, hopefully people, people come out, have a bagel and and chat, so. That's it.
Okay, so unfortunately, Jen, I'm not gonna make it, so I have a motion to, uh, two minutes, go.
Yeah, two minutes, just go.
Two, two minutes.
Yeah, just do it.
Okay, I don't want to see any open meeting law.
It's just not right.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
All right, uh, so again, the MMA Conference is coming up, uh, and, uh, as Yolanda stated, I mean, there's, there's, uh, a number of us attending and, uh, Brandy, I think this is your first. I think it's a great, uh, uh, opportunity, particularly the the, uh, workshops. And this year I had mentioned to Rob earlier, there's a group of websh- uh, workshops, uh, about climate change, you know. So after lis- listening or seeing the presentation from from the Lego team and, uh, you know, certainly all of the the issues that we're dealing with relative that have climate change impacts,
Yeah.
I think I'm gonna probably focus on on those to report back, so.
They should be doing all the workshops.
What's that?
They should be doing the workshop.
Yeah. So, uh, just a reminder to everybody, the Nyanza Proposed Plan Report, uh, there's a public information session on the twenty-third, Tuesday, six thirty at the high school, high school auditorium, so very important meeting to attend.
Thursday, right?
It's a Thursday, sorry, Thursday, the twenty-third, and then, uh, I just want to encourage people to get flu shots. Like, from what I read, uh, there's, uh, strains of flu are getting pretty serious, so, uh, you can still get flu shots. Doctors still recommend you get them today. And then the last thing, and just, you know, Joe touched on this earlier about the the people that we've lost this year and just recently too, and I just want to make note of some recent passings, uh, Marie Johnson, who was a school nurse from nineteen sixty-six through nineteen ninety-three, worked at the, uh, I think at Mindes and at the high school. Vin Hanaran, who was a, uh, a local contractor, very, very active in youth sports for many years. Uh, Beth Holahan, who was a member, very active in the Greater Ashland Lions Club. And then Jen Storson, uh, a longtime Ashland resident that, uh, uh, was very, very active in the Ashland Lions Club. So, uh, you know, our sympathies to their their families and, uh, again, I agree, Joe, we've been going to too many funerals or wakes lately, but, you know, that is life. So, that being said, uh, I, you know, I think we all appreciated the, certainly the the enthusiasm of 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 those Lego league, and, uh, you know, I think it's always great when we have Eagle Scouts here, and, uh, so that was great. It was a great way to start a meeting.
I was, I was kind of glad that the camera was like on the kids, because I felt I was wearing a dunce cap.
Well, I, they were very, very impressive, uh, so, you know, it's good, it's good stuff, so. With that, I'll ta- I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.